This is a regular meeting of the government body of Barrow Bloomingdale, August 20th, 2024. Hold the meetings ordered by the suit to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Gomato.
Here.
Councilwoman Catalano.
Here.
Councilwoman Del Ripa.
Here.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson.
Here.
Councilwoman Schubert.
Here.
Councilman Yasi.
Here.
Okay, we also have our municipal clerk Brianna Smith, business administrator Michael Sondemeyer, and borough attorney Fred Samra. And we have two other borough officials here, Tom Barati's our borough engineer, and Beth McManus, who is our borough planner. This meeting is called to pursuant of the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January 12th, 2024. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public as unfiled in the office of municipal clerk. As per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge there are two emergency exits in this council chambers. The main entrance would you enter through, and the secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exit, exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If there's any questions, please raise your hand.
There's extra seating in the front, folks.
Yeah, I'm gonna get seats up right up here. There's three over there and in between, so if you'd like to sit, which we really like to do, so we don't block the door if possible. Okay, we do have one non-agenda item tonight. We received a grant for $65,000 for exercise equipment for the, at the Walter T. Bergen School. It'll be added to the exercise equipment that we have there now. We're gonna open to early public comment here, which I imagine most of you are, is going to be questions regarding the redevelopment plan. Please hold your questions till we get to that section of the meeting, which will open it up to public, to the public hearing where the public will have a chance to speak. Can I have a motion to open up early public on it reserved for other agenda items?
Summons.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone wishing to come up, please come up. You'll be able to do that when we get to that portion, okay? All right. See you no one, a motion to close.
Summons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Report of committees, Evie.
Okay. I'll start with the Senior Center. As always, every Wednesday, the seniors meet at 9:00 a.m. for the, to walk. They meet Wednesdays, 9:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. Also, they have a lot of events that are up and coming. Tomorrow, Jersey Dreamers will be at the Hanover Manor. There is something up on the Bloomingdale website. If you go to Bloomingdale website, then go under Departments, it's the Senior Department. Hanover Manor, there's transportation. It's tomorrow, and it's afternoon of dancing and entertainment with the Jersey Dreamers. There's information online for that. September 27, they have Lions and Tigers O'May. There's a trip to the Turtleback Zoo. Of course, all of these wonderful programs are made possible by the Senior Center and Pat Yanissee. There's, everything's available online. There's also the programs that are almost daily at the Senior Center aerobics. There's library, there's book club, the Golden Age meetings, there's a balance class, there's chair aerobics, and all these things are available on the website. There's also October 4th, there's an Oktoberfest at the Black Bowl Restaurant. If you're interested in that, I would suggest to contact the Senior Center at (973) 838-9259, or contact Pat Yanissee at pyanissee@bloomingdalenj.net for information. It's a wonderful resource. I also, there's also a, there's a nutrition center where seniors are encouraged to go and socialize and eat lunch for a very reasonable price. And it's all healthy, balanced meals. If you guys have parents that are seniors that need some kind of social contact, definitely bring them to the Senior Center. There's all kinds of wonderful things to do there. There's also, I always mention that on the website, there's a for seniors, and they have a discount for, for the EZ Pass. I just figured, there's so many people here, might as well let everyone know, take advantage of that. And it's a wonderful way to, to, there's lots of resources on that site. Next, there's also, I had some information for the library. And again, the Bloomingdale Free Public Library has a wonderful website, and it's also available through, they have their own link, but you could find it at the Bloomingdale.org website as well. For, this summer, they had their adventures in summer reading, where, right through June 24th to August 16th, where they distributed. The program had prizes and crafts. There was a, there's the kindergarten. On August 28th, there's a meet and greet that's coming up. Again, online, there's all this information. Baby Story Times, every Monday at 10:30 a.m., they have it. And also, the adult summer reading, they also have their meetings, which is tomorrow at 7:00. And also, adult crafts and children's crafts are available online. They also have wonderful events that are coming up. There's a wine and sip that's available, and they haven't put the date for their holiday one, but I'll find that in a second. Yeah, the painted sip is November 3rd. And as always, also with our public events, Bloomingdale Celebration Day is coming up on September 21st, and the library will be there. And they always, it's always a special place to stop, because they always have a craft and treats for the kids. And they will also attend the Holiday Stroll that's December 14th, and for the library. And then I also have news from the numbers for July. Sorry. Well, okay. I have also BBYC, the Bloomingdale Youth, they're, they have a meeting tonight at, also at 8:30. But they already had their scrimmage at Salazir. Well, there's also another scrimmage coming up, 8:22 for their, their youth league. There are important dates as far as fundraising for the public. If they're interested, I know that they have their, their calendar raffle that's out there. If there's a young child out there that you need, that is selling, lots of people are selling that. I encourage you to do so, because they have lots of great discounts in town. Also, there's a, their tag day is, there's one Labor Day weekend, Friday through Sunday. You'll see the kids out in front of our area stores. And I encourage you to, if you go to breakfast, they'll be there, donate. It's very important to donate, even though, you know, they've got New Jerseys this year. And it's a wonderful program. They also have Wendy's Dine to donate, August 20th. If you go to Wendy's on, well, that was today, until 8:00. There, you can donate there. There are pictures, there's so many. Of course, all this is available online, the information. And that's for Bloomingdale Youth. And then... Okay. For our numbers for July, the numbers for July 4th, Triborough, they got 170 calls. Year-to-date, they have 1,038 calls. Last month, last meeting, mayor had asked me what was the calls for in July, and I looked up the emails, and it was 188 calls, so a little less. But continuing with that, the county paid or took 37 calls. Triborough covered 115 calls, Miss 13. Calls to Butler were 69, calls to Bloomingdale were 56, calls to Kinnalau were 32. Mutual aid calls this year were, this year, July was 13, last year was 18. And she did, Gail Donlap, she did, I did, there is a need for volunteers. If you have a child that would want to be a nurse, or possibly, if you are a retired person and want to give your time, the Triborough League would appreciate you to. And there is a course that they, they're running, I believe it starts in September. It's only $100. That's something that you can do. And also, something that I'd like to mention from the Triborough is that if you have, if you got into an accident, if you have a senior that has a problem, they have medical equipment that they could share to the community. So, most items are available to take, some you could borrow and bring back. So if you have any information, any need for that, please contact (973) 838-1688, and they could accommodate you. This is a wonderful, and they also have a fundraiser coming up, but they haven't given me the information yet. And it's a wonderful place to...
Support.
To support.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Right.
I have a couple things. Public events. We're gonna start with September 11th. We have our 9/11 candlelight ceremony and walk that will be starting in Butler Park at 7:00 p.m. and going to Sloan Park. As Evie mentioned, September 21st, Bloomingdale Celebration Day and Bob Kocca 5K. John will tell everyone how to sign up for that. Also, we're really looking forward to our new event, that's October 19th. John Graziano will brief on that. Expedition Bloomingdale, that's the town scavenger hunt. As always, I say, every single meeting, if you have not done so, please sign up for our emergency notification system, Rave. If you go to the Bloomingdale website, the main page, go to the bottom right-hand side, you'll see Rave. You will also see a link for Recycle Coach. That's an excellent app you can put on your phone, and it notifies you of what your garbage and your recycling days are. Really fantastic app if you have not done so. Also, I just wanted to say thank you to our DPW, our police, and Butler Electric for the response for the storm the other night. Happened very quickly, and our guys were out right away, as always. So, thank you to everybody. It was wonderful. Lastly, while I understand why you all are here tonight, there's a couple things that I want to convey. First, there has been a great deal of misinformation, mostly on social media. Let me stress to everyone, social media is not the place to get your information. The council, the mayor, our borough administrator, we are all available at any time for questions. You can either go to the Bloomingdale website, and our emails are all on there, or you can call Town Hall, and they would be happy to give out all of our emails. Secondly, it is highly inappropriate for anyone, especially on social media, to mention our children. No one up here. All of our children are off limits. It's, it's very disappointing that anyone would even mention anyone's kids in any political conversation. So please, our children are off limits. We ran for council, our kids and spouses, families, they did not. Lastly, the suggestion of impropriety by any member of this council is ludicrous and quite frankly insulting to, I'm sure, all of us. There is not a member of this council up here, from Evie to Rich, that is not up here with some type of ulterior motive. They didn't run with an ulterior motive. No one. We all ran because we're trying to do the best thing for our town. We, our motive is to put in a playground. That's our motive. Our motive is to pave our streets, update our infrastructure, provide great classes, you know, rec services. That's our motives. For anyone to suggest otherwise, that we're putting our hands out for anything other than that, is really, that's ridiculous. No one up here is. And I'll speak for myself. If I had my hand out and money coming into my pocket, I wouldn't have two jobs. And this girl has two jobs. So, what I ask from everyone tonight is grace for the members of this council, the mayor, our borough administrator, our town attorney, Tom Barati, our engineer. That's what I'm asking for everyone to come up here tonight and give each of us, with the understanding that we're doing our best and trying to do what we think is right for our town. I thank you all for coming tonight. This is excellent. I can tell you, our council meetings, we usually have one or two people here. This showing is great. And we're all looking forward to hearing what everybody has to say.
Thank you, Don. Well said. Three short but very important items I want to go through, all Economic Development Commission related. You might have heard, because it's been said a couple times today, but there is Bloomingdale Celebration Day. It's gonna be September 21st. The folks on the EDC really put their heart and souls into this, planning it out for us. It's gonna be a great event. We're gonna have over 80 vendors there. The Shamrock School of Music, they'll be playing for three hours. That's new. We haven't really had a live band there in many years. We're going to have demonstrations throughout the day, and Bloomingdale Rack will also be putting on races. So I hope to see you all there. It starts at 11:00, which usually is opened up by the opening ceremonies of the Bob Kocca 5K, and then it closes down around 4:00 o'clock. Second item, the scavenger hunt, Expedition Bloomingdale. This is a new thing that we're doing. It's going to start October 19th. There'll be signups that you can do online. It's a team event. There'll be about 10 different locations you can go to. It's all based on clues, where you have to figure out where to go. And then the top three, I guess who finishes the fastest is the best way to say it, will receive essentially certificates from some of our local businesses as well. So look for that, that'll be a good time. We meet at 9:30 at Sloan Park, that's where the check-in is. And then last, this is a new business in town, PIP Printing. They're located at 38 Main Street. So we're working with them on a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We're hoping to do it tomorrow, but it doesn't work for them. So we'll let everybody know when we are ready for that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody down here?
I'll just touch on the fact that I think we're gonna cover more of this as we discuss the redevelopment plan, but the Planning Board met on July 24th and sent its recommendations out, which I believe you all received. I just want to compliment our planner and our borough engineer and our subcommittee for working to adopt the majority of those at some level and compromise and cooperate with what I think were good changes to the plan. So, just coming from that.
Thank you. Mike?
Just one, one thing, Mayor. The senior pavilion has been delivered, and is in the process of being put together. So hopefully, you guys will believe that would be a good project.
Okay, exercise equipment?
Exercise equipment is on for non-agenda tonight. That's just purchasing some adult fitness equipment for the Walter T. Bergen track area. So if we pass that tonight, I can purchase that from our grant we got for $65,000. So, doesn't cost us anything. Beautiful equipment.
Great.
No report, thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Just for me, just on a personal note, the Bob Kocca 5K, which is something kind of dear to my heart, this would be our 11th year running this event for pancreatic cancer. And we've raised over $116,000 so far in the, in 11 years we've been doing this. So we're gonna continue it, with the great support of our community. And it's a great kickoff for Celebration Day, but we do get a lot of support from our, our local people, the sponsors and things of that nature. So I thank everyone for that. And the Kocca family thanks everyone, because they're a big part of that. The other thing I'd like to talk about a little bit is the fire department. We had a house fire this morning up in Vero Lab with a resident stuck in the house. And I'd just like to thank our police department for going up there and going in and getting that person out who was disabled. So that was a great thing that they did for us this morning. And then the minimal damage to the fire up there, and with the help of the Butler Fire Department and obviously our fire department. So, kudos to our police department for being there and saving a life today, which was great. Okay.
If I may, since I thought you might mention it, I don't know if anyone brought up the wet down this past weekend, but I thought you may. So I just will kind of summarize that one more time. A great event hosted here at the fire hall this past weekend. I'll just compliment the fire department on that, in breaking out our new engine.
For those that don't know exactly what a wet down means to the fire service, anytime a new apparatus gets delivered, anywhere usually in the town, especially locally, the blessing of it, we'll say, is inviting us around the towns and come throw water on it and celebrate the delivery of that new vehicle. And we had a really, really good turnout on Saturday. We probably had, I don't know, probably 600, 700 people here, coming and going, and fire departments from pretty much all of the north coming up for 10 minutes. And there's, again, with our police department helped us and our DPW helped us, but it was a good event. And the public came out, which is, saw a lot of people locally that came out and enjoyed it. So we thank them for attending and enjoying that also. Okay. Resolution number 2024-8-1, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Summons.
Second.
Any questions?
We're just a comment. So I see we have a film that's gonna be filmed here. Sounds like a pretty great thing. It's educational film. It's, is this related to 3D pets as well? Is that gonna be the topic of it?
Yes.
So a business in town that does prosthetic legs for dogs. It's pretty cool. It's gonna be filmed at Sloan Park. I think it's one day in length, right?
It's one day of filming.
Yeah, one day of filming. It's not a whole day of watching, yes. So, so looking forward to that. I think that's a good thing to see on here.
And the park, I believe the park will stay open while the filming is going on. And so, you know, this is unusual there, but you'll have some entertainment with a movie being filmed, which is pretty neat in our town.
And I'd also like to say, Jen Ellis resigned from the Board of Health. I just want to take a moment to thank her for her time and effort to the committee. It was, she spent a lot of time and energy on it, and thank you very much, Jen.
We thank her. She's been in a lot of different boards for our town and doing a lot of great things with our town. Okay, roll call, please.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Okay. Pending item is number nine. This is second fine re-up public hearing ordinance number 14-2024, adopting the redevelopment plan for Block 5105, lots 1401, 53, 55, 58, 59, and 61. What we're gonna do is, just this way it's gonna work, we're gonna have our borough attorney and our planner do a presentation, so you can see how we got to where we are today. And I think by going through the presentation, might answer some of the questions here or the opinions. But we're gonna go through a whole slide program, and then we'll go into ordinance, and then when we get to the point for public hearing, you'll be able to come up and ask your questions, make your comments, and then we'll go from there. So we're just gonna follow the rules, and all the questions that come up, if it's directed to the council, please direct them to me, our planner and our attorney, and us. We will answer the questions to the best of our ability. And we're gonna be showing a lot of benefits, and like I said, we'll do this from where we started and to where we got to today. The redevelopment plan itself is just the beginning of the stage of the complex on Union Ave, the very beginning. Once this is adopted, it goes to the Planning Board, they have to submit, or there's a real big process that has to go through to get to the very end, to where it is built, to that point, which will be probably five to six years for the bill to be complete, once we go through all the process and agree to everything. So, without further ado, I'm gonna have our planner Beth McManus, borough attorney Fred Samra, they're gonna come up and go through the slide program, Rich is gonna run it, and then we'll go from there. I will say, there's been, I know most of you have been to the Planning Board meeting, and the Planning Board made there, as Dominic said, their suggestions and changes. We hit a lot of those topics, and we made a lot of changes to that, to satisfy the Planning Board, where they, I believe, will feel comfortable. And, go ahead. Folks, there's a lot of empty seats up here, if you want to come up. You don't have to stand back there.
There's a lot, there's a lot of empty seats.
You can see better, you can hear better.
Yeah, so come on in.
Trust me, it's gonna be good. There you go. You're a good doctor.
There's another one in the front, guys. And there's a couple right here.
Fred just gave another one.
I know.
Thank you, Fred.
Guys, there's a couple more up here.
Two more we just added.
Okay. I'll start. Fred Samra, I'm the borough attorney. I've had the privilege to serve as borough attorney since 2012. And during that time, I've seen this track, which we're all familiar with, as known as Semir Track, really be a subject of a lot of conversations, dating back to the 1980s to the present date. And I've seen this evolve with respect to the pressures of affordable housing, development, the idea that there is a built with remedy suit, things of that nature, all that led us to where we are today. Tonight, as the mayor said, there's a redevelopment plan that before the governing bodies, a step along the way in the process. And what I'm going to do is just talk a little bit about, you know, how we are at this point. Thank you, Rich. So, the area in question, the redevelopment area, involves six lots. And the most significant lot is the Semir Track, and that is about 42 acres in size. But we all know where it is, on Union Avenue, and it's adjacent or near the DPW Fire Department, and it has existing zoning on the property, including various zoning designations over the years. This redevelopment plan, if it's approved tonight, is a zoning that will basically overlay this zone. This will be the applicable zoning if someone chooses to develop these tracks as a group. And so, when we look at the next slide, it talks about the actual properties that are subject of this, besides just what we know as the Semir Track and the 40 or so acres. There's a number of adjacent properties, many of which were residential. There's a number of adjacent properties, many of which were residential, three of them were purchased by the contract purchaser for the Mier Tract and the developer to help with respect to access and as far as being a better neighbor, and it's always better in a redevelopment process, not that this governing body has never asked for condemnation, it's not, it never was accepted by this governing body, but if the developer and private residents come up with an appropriate selling price, which happened here, then those properties make better planning for the benefit of the community. So there's additional lots that have been identified here to make this, to round out this redevelopment plan. So those are the lots along Union Avenue, and as I said, some have already been purchased, some may be purchased, some may not, if they don't choose to sell, that's their property, they're not in any way forced to sell their property. But those are the properties that were subject of this redevelopment plan. So the process for redevelopment, redevelopment is a tool that is given to municipalities on the local level that the ability to plan in a manner that best suits the municipality will give some flexibility in the process to do it in a way that meets the goals and objectives of a community. So in this case, there's, there's really two parts. First, you have to see if the property and the properties meet the requirements of a redevelopment, and there's certain criteria set forth by the law that determine whether these properties meet the redevelopment criteria. That process has already been completed by the governing body and the planning board, the planner, the governing body authorized an investigation just to see if the properties meet a redevelopment criteria, and the planning board conducted an investigation and had a public hearing, and then this governing body came and concluded based on all the information that the properties meet the requirements for redevelopment. And all that does, that didn't have any zoning or rights, it meant that the governing body had flexibility to have a redevelopment plan, to have specific zoning for a property as opposed to what would be called, like, a, you know, illegal type spot zoning, you have the right to be flexible, hear what the developer wants, take a look at the property, listen to the needs of the community along the way in a public process. You can have certain arrangements such as a pilot, which, again, is something that's a separate day, a separate designation, there's no obligation here for a pilot, but it's available under redevelopment law. So with that in mind, the governing body identified these properties and determined they meet the redevelopment criteria. So the next step along the way is to say, well, let's come up with a redevelopment plan for the property, and, and that is, in its rightful sense, a very long process if it's done correctly, and that's what happened here. Over the past few years, there's been discussions about what would be appropriate for this property, all the way down to, as you'll hear from planner McManus, very specific details in the actual redevelopment plan as to what would be acceptable and what is not recommended for this governing body's consideration. So that's where you are tonight on a redevelopment plan, and I think it's important to mention, like the mayor said, this is a step along the way if it's approved, it says that the property could be redeveloped with this vision, but it doesn't mean that it's done. The next step would be for the developer to put together a complete application, to notice, have a public hearing, and a site plan application to address any concerns of the public, the actual planning board's questions and concerns, in the context of this being the plan, to discuss its impacts, questions from residents, adjacent property owners, traffic, things of that nature, all come up in a redevelopment site plan application. Tonight just sets the ground for what the application would entail, and the zoning, the overlay zoning. And by the way, the history, we all know this goes back, and I was reading articles back to the 1980s, right, and the Mier Tract, and what might happen to the Mier Tract. Why? Because in over time, it's become even more so a centerpiece of development pressures because of affordable housing obligations. So in 2008, after a number of legitimate side steps, a rejection of a development for 360 units, there was a lawsuit by the developer that said, we want a builder's remedy. Builders' remedies, you don't hear many of them, but when you do, they're, they're very significant. What it means is, a court says you didn't provide for affordable housing, so a court, not the governing body, the planning board, it is a court that can come in and take any property to push your sufficient and affordable housing and say, we're going to order the development, whether it be high-rise development, high-density development, you lose that local zoning right and protection because you don't comply. That's what happened back in 2008. Judge Borough Lives Humphreys issued a decision that said the borough was not compliant, borough had preserved for open space other properties, this property was supposed to be developed as part of a prior round of affordable housing obligation, and therefore a builder's remedy was issued. Now, if you should make your sound, such as Englewood Quips had a builder's remedy, there's a town over in Essex County, which is Milburn, that's having a number of issues where there's personal lawsuits, there's fines being imposed by the court, the court can override local zoning, they take that right away. But nonetheless, in 2008, the court ordered the borough to approve this 380-unit development, and that's what took place by the time 2012 came around, and it was supposed to be done expeditiously. As of today, there's still no units on the property, right? But still, during that time, DR Horton, which is one of the largest residential developers in the country, came forward and said, we can't develop this property because of a lot of the constraints, it would just be not cost-effective to develop this. So the borough has a dilemma, we have this affordable housing obligation, we have a property that even the best residential developer, or at least one of the largest, can't develop this, and what's going to happen? Well, the Mier family, they sold the property to Tilcon, which meant the property could be quarried, and be quarried up to its boundaries, we still wouldn't have the affordable housing obligation then. And the governing body at the time, around the 2015 time period, came forward with a proposal with Tilcon where it said, Tilcon said, we will give you about 42 acres of land, which is essentially the core of the Mier Tract, in exchange for you giving Tilcon the right to expand their existing longstanding property operation, and we will in turn give you the land that'll reduce the cost, will give the borough, who still has this obligation, some type of an opportunity to control its own plan and destiny and get the affordable obligation in place, so you don't once again jeopardize your, your protection and builder's remedy status. At the same time, in about 2016, we went before Judge Bogdan and received our third round certification, again, which is kind of amazing, the centerpiece, again, the second round, again, the third round, was the Mier Tract. The court didn't really say, well, you didn't do it last round, most of the time they add that to the next round. The court basically accepted the borough's presentation that this is still our best opportunity to be in affordable housing, the Highlands has certainly taken away a lot of development opportunities, things such as the Horace Barn are off the table now, they're in the preservation area, so the court approved it. The court said, we still have to develop this tract, and basically, the message was, and I'm paraphrasing, and I was there, was, you know, from Judge Bogdan, it's, look, it's gone a long time, I really hope the borough's got a plan and gets this done, it's quite a long history. So with that, the Tilcon plan was to transfer the property to the borough, and the borough was to find a developer. There was a lawsuit in 2015 or 16 that went on in Superior Court, and then up to the appellate division in 2018, challenging whether wire restrictions on the property were still enforceable. The court said, no, they're not, they're not enforceable, it slowed down the process, but it got to the point where the developer, developers came forward, and some had absolutely no appetite to pay money to develop the property, some wanted the borough to try to contribute to develop the property, and then there's a developer after very long discussions, which was MNT, in 2020, said, we will develop this property, and yes, we will pay you $4.7 million for the property the borough already received, and we'll develop the property. So we had public hearings, there was a discussion about the contract, the contract was approved by the governing body, it was for 426 units, because at the time, dating back to 2016 and '17, the developers said, we're going to need additional units to make this financially feasible because of some of the extreme costs on the property. So when we get to 2021, the court approved the 426, built 72 affordable units, and the borough did something else in this process, it didn't sell all 42 units, 42 acres, it only sold about 28 acres, so it held back on 12 acres or so, because it didn't want to risk having room for more development, we've seen development in a 20, 30 units an acre, didn't want to let go of those, that, that land, but yet the land is contiguous to this 426 unit purchase, which is under contract for the development of what we knew as the Mier Tract. So since that time, and the change in costs, the change in affordable housing regulations, and the fact that the borough still managed to retain the 12 additional acres, there was discussion about how to best posture the borough going forward to say, look, we don't want this to be 1,000 units, we don't want this to be 900 multifamily units, we're at the 426 for a very good reason, we're a long history, but the discussion came to, which is proposed, to go to 500 units on the site, but that additional 74 units would all be age-restricted senior units, it would not be multifamily units, and the borough doesn't have any age-restricted developers, so it would just be strictly for seniors for, for that availability, and no multifamily-type units for the additional units. And at the same time, with respect to the rest of the acreage that the borough was holding on to, the discussion was to have a commercial-type use for the remaining tract of land, and to make sure there would be a retail component on the original 426 units, because it would give some synergy to the project and be part of the community, not just for the residents that would reside there, but for the rest of the community, to have some retail, such as coffee shops, drive-in, whatever that may be as well. So all of those components come together, and the developer proposes an additional $2 million for the property that the borough received by donation, sold once, and would sell again and control its destiny and its vision without any additional multifamily units. So that's the history where we are, and just if we look, you know, you know, looking back as to how we got here, you know, the Tilcon had retained, as I said, the 41 acres, they could have been, had they not deeded the property to the borough, just expanded their garden, and had a nuisance activity, and all of that type of expansion at some point winds up into some type of use in the future. Again, the risk of not controlling the amount of high-density development in the future. Unfortunately, the borough has already made that deal and had, and we own the property for 42 acres, it's been closed on with title, it's in the borough's name. So, but that also means the 72 affordable units would have had to be dealt with, and as you see on the next slide, the other options were, well, the borough for the 72 affordable units, it would cost about $30 to $35 million, with those developer costs that no one else wanted to take on without additional development or retail, because that would be, have to be paid for by the taxpayers between $30 and $35 million, as we've estimated site preparation, housing construction, and then the borough would have to administer those affordable units, maintain them, qualify, and take care of them, as well as whatever, you know, maintenance and upkeep, financing costs, etc. Or you run the risk that if someone else gets a hold of the property, or if a court comes in, there could be some type of order for an affordable housing plan that says, well, if you build 1,000 units here, maybe then it would be cost-effective, and that's going to be the borough's obligation. You know, one of the things like we, we looked at was just next door, we talked about Riverdale, you know, the, the brand, there's like 2,500 units there, and that's in at almost 42 units an acre. This proposal is 11 units an acre, it's like a, less than a third, just to give you the difference, as to what can happen, and I'm sure Ms. McManus will talk about affordable housing densities in the range of 20, 22 units an acre. And so this controls that development, and again, no additional multifamily units going from the 426 to the 500. So what you're, when you hear about the plan, the proposal, and again, there's, there's no contract that's signed, but this is what's been visioned by the council, and this is what the council would, would look for here with this developer, it's been discussed, would be for an additional $2 million, which would bring $6.7 million in revenue for closing on property that the borough didn't pay for, but received as part of its rezoning of the property and financial, well, deal with Tilcon. And then the units would go from 426, which were under contract for, it would, the proposal takes you 426 again, doesn't change, but additional 74 senior units, the ability for industrial building, and there's retail and commercial uses. The other thing is, the borough's selling the additional 12 acres, but again, it's still taking something back. Six of the developmental, six of the acres are going to be preserved for open space to make sure that the developer doesn't have an opportunity to expand whatever's agreed upon. So again, the borough's going to just hold back something to make sure it keeps within its vision. So again, it's the sale of 12, but six acres are going to be dedicated to open space, and there's discussion, but that's really for another date and time, because that would be, the ordinance, the public hearing, the negotiation, financial information would have to be exchanged, discussions amongst the governing body, but if, if we're a pilot, we've, so far, there's, there's an agreement on the original 426 for a pilot with a minimum payment of $1.2 million a year. And that $1.2 million is if the 426 units average rent about $2,300 a unit, and we already know at Avalon Bay, they're at like $2,800 or $2,900 a unit. So that's a very conservative number, and it has a 2.5% growth even on the minimum payment, so as far as what the revenue would look like on the 426. If there's a pilot on the additional units and on the additional industrial project, that could be a total of $1.9 to $2 million a year in total in revenue to the borough. And again, it would be with 2.5% growth, you know, there are tax appeals, you have stability, and you have still that growth in the payments. So as we look at even, just as a side note, Avalon Bay, there was a minimum payment, the minimum payment is what drives their payment every year. So even though they have their revenues and they're going up, the minimum was, was put together so well by the governing body that that's the payment that's being made, and that too goes up on a percentage every year, and there's been no return of dollars because it's a pilot. But again, that's not part of the approval of this redevelopment plan, it's not including, you can't include a pilot, this is strictly for land use. So Jen, that's just the summary of what we talked about, it would provide, this redevelopment plan would provide the 72 affordable units, we've all heard about the next round of affordable housing litigation, if a contract is entered into, this developer or anyone else who were to buy this property with this development would stipulate they will not get involved in our fourth round affordable housing litigation, they will accept this and not ask for anything more, which is very important, because you can look anywhere else throughout the state that's never enough for developers on affordable housing, you'll use that to get additional units, they would not be able to do that here. Again, we talked about six acres of open space out of the 12, and retail and commercial, and an industrial building potentially, that right, and it could be even just a data center, that would have very limited intensity, and, you know, finally, most importantly, to this increment, what's in front of the government- governing body, it only provides for additional senior age-restricted housing. It would be restrictions where they cannot have anyone that is not a senior in those properties, age-restricted. So we talked about the pilot, and just as an asterisk to this, what this also means is the water and sewer fees, it helps stabilize because each one of these units now has a connection and they're charged. There will be, in the first contract, the rates were fixed between the developer and the borough, but at the same time, all affordable units by law are entitled to a 50% discount on connection fees. That's just the state law. But nonetheless, the connection fees would be for each and every unit that are part of the project, which is a great infusion to the capital of the water and sewer system to avoid rate increases in the future, especially with a lot of the DEP regulations that are changing to address the cost of the water system. So with that, Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to Beth McManus, who's the planner for the borough, who's worked on the redevelopment plan. Beth?
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Okay. So the first thing I want to talk about before we get into the details about what's permitted, I want to give some overarching requirements set forth in the plan. And so the first thing to understand is that this is simply an overlay to the existing zoning. That means that the existing zoning, which is the AH1 district... Is my microphone on? Sorry, I don't have it on.
Is that one? That one's not going to work. Oh, okay. We do have two more seats up here if anybody would like to come in and actually sit and be comfortable. Don't start singing.
Sorry, folks, I can't really read the screen very well. So, okay, so the first thing I want to start with are some basic structural items. As I said, this is an overlay, and I hope folks can hear me now. So that means that the existing zoning, the AH1 district, remains in place. There's no change to that zoning. What the developer could do under that zoning continues. However, what the redevelopment plan serves as through this overlay is an additional option for development. Now, the benefits that Mr. Semro just went through, those are tied directly to the redevelopment plan, but this is an option, technically it's an option for the developer. In addition to that, the redevelopment plan states that only the, a designated redeveloper may develop the site. And that is important because we want to ensure that the folks that are constructing the housing, constructing the various buildings and improvements, our folks, our developer that we are comfortable with, I think very likely the developer that has been part of the negotiations thus far. But this is an additional level of control to ensure that we don't have a new entity that perhaps we're not comfortable with coming through to do a very significant development here in Bloomingdale. Similarly, we also have a redevelopment agreement that is required. That redevelopment agreement will, in part, designate that redeveloper, but it's also an opportunity for additional requirements and terms to be put in place, perhaps any operational items, terms that are perhaps not appropriate for a redevelopment plan because it's not about land use or zoning, but is perhaps related to other borough concerns. In addition, and this has already been highlighted, but I just want to put a very fine point on it, and that is that one preliminary or site plan approval is required. That means that if this redevelopment plan is adopted, that the developer is obligated to come back for at least one more public hearing before the planning board, where the planning board will review all of their application. As part of that site plan application, the developer has to request what's referred to as preliminary approval for the, for the entire redevelopment area. That means that we are going to know exactly how this site will be redeveloped in total at the time of site plan application, as opposed to the developer sort of piecemealing one building here, one building there, one building over here. This means that at the site plan application, the planning board will know exactly how the site functions throughout each piece of it and how each piece relates to the surrounding area. In addition, there are strong controls to require that the developer meets the, I would say, the most fundamental aspects of the plan, and that is the bottom middle square up there where it says, "De-variances are not permitted." De-variances also refer, or often referred to as use variances. So that means, for example, that the developer is not even allowed to ask to construct a use that is not permitted in the redevelopment plan. And that is really different than typical zoning. Under normal circumstances, where there's no redevelopment plan in place, anybody can ask for any use, and they may get approved through the, through the land use process. Here, if the developer wants to request a prohibited use, for example, they actually have to come back to the council to seek a redevelopment plan amendment. And that too, of course, would be done through a public hearing like we're having this evening. And then lastly, the other note about the redevelopment plan is that any topic that is not addressed in the plan simply means that the existing borough code applies. So for example, if we're not addressing lighting, although this plan does address lighting, but if we did not address lighting, the borough's existing lighting standards would apply to the site. The same thing might apply to, to certain landscaping provisions that are not directly addressed in the redevelopment plan. This means that we're not throwing away the borough code. We're just simply adding to it with an additional set of regulations that are applicable to this particular redevelopment area. Okay. So now that we've gotten some of that administrative stuff out of the way, let's talk about the more, I think the more important items, starting with what exactly is permitted on the property. So one of the central pieces of this project is, of course, the residential. But in addition to residential, I would say residential specifically multifamily as well as mixed-use development. And so as we've already learned, the project is permitted to, to have up to 500 housing units on the property. However, only 354 of those are permitted to be family units, family market rate units. Additionally, we permit 74 senior units, and then of course, we have those all-important 72 affordable housing units. In addition, as I mentioned, mixed use. Specifically, what I'm referring to is commercial and residential mixed use. The requirement in this plan is that at least 10,000 square feet of mixed-use building be used for commercial uses. So think of things like restaurant, retail, office space, things like that. And so we've got a minimum of 10,000 square feet in the site. Other permitted uses include, and I should say, required use here in particular, I think it's most noteworthy, is a pedestrian plaza. So one of the things that we've required is that there be a plaza area, like an outdoor public, public park, but hardscape, a plaza, will be constructed. And that's important because what we're trying to do is create a sense of community on this site, not just for the folks living in those 500 housing units, but also for the rest of the borough. The hope is that this is really a lovely location in the borough for folks to come to, perhaps for a meal or for some services, or perhaps to just simply sit outside in the plaza. In addition, we also have an industrial building that is permitted within the redevelopment plan. It has a maximum footprint of 320,000 square feet, and it also permits up to 60,000 square feet of office space. That would be in a mezzanine, essentially a second-story office within the industrial building. And some of those permitted uses in the industrial building include things like research laboratories, general commercial, as well as office, warehouse, indoor recreation, data center, self-storage and animal daycare. All of those uses will be permitted in that building. There are a number of additional permitted uses on the site. They include a water tower, wireless communication towers and antennas, one, some essential services, which are largely borough services. We also, of course, have open space and recreation. Importantly, that's six acres, or actually 6.2 acres, that are required to be set aside for open space. And we also are permitting one heli-stop or helipad, essentially a landing area for a helicopter that would be located proximate to the industrial building, as you'll see in a bit. I think things to note about the helipad or the heli-stop is that this is not a commercial taxi helicopter location. Instead, this is one, one pad site that will serve one helicopter that must take off or land for a reason that is associated with one of the businesses located on the property. Should say also that the, the heli-stop will also be available for emergency services. So there is a borough, a borough benefit associated with that as well. I also want to highlight the fact that there are, in addition to some of the use restrictions, as I said, no, no taxi, also no, no commercial drone delivery, for example, no training uses for the helipad. We also have hours of operation that are set forth in the redevelopment plan that I'll review towards the end of the presentation. In addition to the variety of permitted uses that I just went through, we also have tract, what I'm referring to in there are tract area standards, essentially development standards or zoning standards, if you will, that are applicable to the entire tract. They include things such as a required buffer to off-site or adjacent residential uses. It's a minimum of 15 feet that must include a double row of evergreen trees intending to provide a visual buffer and a noise buffer, really a buffer from any activity on the property. In addition, we set for a maximum building cover of 40%, a maximum impervious cover of 70%. And really important, those percentages, the 40% and the 70%, that is not the percentage of the entire tract. Instead, it is the percentage of the area that is going to be disturbed for this development. So if you recall, they are required to come in for site plan approval for the entire tract all at once. And so that will give the planning board the understanding it needs to determine if they've met that 40% and that 70% requirement for just the area that they are proposing to disturb. And then we also have, the last item on the screen is a minimum parking setback of 15 feet, just to give some space between the road or perhaps any adjacent property lines in the parking area. I'm going to go through some of the bulk and site design standards associated with the various uses or the various buildings on the property, starting with the residential and the mixed-use building. So we have a maximum number of units in any particular building at 300 units. So that means that of the 500 housing units that are permitted on the property, there are going to be at least two buildings on the property. At a minimum, it would be up to 300 and the remaining 200 or some variation of that, but not exceeding 300 housing units. In addition, we have a maximum building height of 60 feet or going up to 72 feet once you incorporate their architectural features that might be included in the building. We have a minimum front yard setback, again, for just the residential and mixed-use building of 75 feet. And there are a variety of architectural standards set forth in the redevelopment plan to make sure that we have a nice-looking building and one that is, that is appropriate for really the purpose that we are hoping this area serves as, which is really a small community For the industrial building, similarly, we also have bulk standards. And one of the first things, and I think one of the most important items we have, is the minimum setback to Union Avenue. So as you can see, it's required to be setback a minimum of 450 feet from the road. And that is, I think, really important because it is going to significantly reduce the visibility of the building, which is, as I said before, about 320,000 square feet in its footprint. In addition to that, it has to be setback from other tract boundaries, other property lines, a minimum of 50 feet. And this building has a lower maximum height of 50 feet, but going up to 62 feet, including any architectural features. So think of things in the industrial building, like a parapet that might be used to hide mechanical equipment that's situated on the roof. And then lastly for this slide, and I think also really important for the industrial building and any, any use that's in there, there is no left turn for trucks that are greater, at 40,000 pounds or greater, on Union Avenue. So that means any tractor-trailers, when they're exiting the site, will instead go right down Union Avenue rather than left towards your existing downtown. Some additional standards, we have parking standards set forth in here. One of them is that at least 80% of the residential and the mixed-use parking must be located within structured parking or a parking garage. That's, I think that's important because it's going to help to reduce the area of disturbance, it's going to reduce the building cover or the impervious cover on the property. In addition, we have parking standards provided for the various uses on the property. And so those have been targeted for the, the uses permitted in the earlier slides that I just went through. We also have standards to ensure that in addition to vehicles being well-designed and accommodated on the site, that pedestrians and bicycles are accommodated. And we do that through requirement of sidewalks and also requiring bike parking with the hope that the site is going to be easy, convenient and comfortable for folks both on foot and on bike in addition to, in their cars. And then in addition to those big items, there are a variety of other standards set forth in the redevelopment plan. Items addressing things such as landscaping, plantings, lighting, architectural standards, sign standards, as well as retaining walls. We have some sustainability requirements set forth in there. And then of course, the all-important of affordable housing because it is just critical that the affordable housing units that are permitted on the site and that will be developed on the site do exactly what they're supposed to do, which is fulfill a part of the borough's affordable housing obligation and do so in a way that is compliant and doesn't frankly create a bigger headache for us in the future. Okay. So on these next couple of slides, there are a series of concept plans and elevations. And I want to be very clear about, about their meaning and what their purpose is in the redevelopment plan. So this concept plan that you see on the screen up here is largely an example of how the redevelopment regulations can be utilized to develop the property. However, there are some, I think there are some aspects of the concept plan that are very much reflective of the regulation. So for example, if you see the, I think perhaps the industrial building might be obvious, but it's the large, larger building towards the bottom of the screen. That building is located a little, on the, on the concept plan, a little bit more than 450 feet from Union Avenue. And so you can get a sense as to where that building is permitted. Similarly, the helipad is directly to the, to the right, the little square off to, at the, to the right of the long end of the building. That's the location of the helipad or heli-stop. And that location is required, it must be consistent with the concept plan in their site plan. And so that, that is one of the aspects of the concept plan that is required. But the mixed-use buildings, which are the, the mixed-use and the residential buildings, which are essentially the other buildings located closer to Union Avenue, those are examples of how the site could be developed consistent with the redevelopment plan. And then similarly, here we have an example image of an industrial building to give everybody a sense as to what the building could look like and how those architectural requirements could be fulfilled. And then the next several pictures are examples of the residential and the mixed-use buildings. And so what you see here are buildings that are compliant with the redevelopment plan from the perspective of the pedestrian plaza, the architecture, the stories, the... And so what you see here are buildings that are compliant with the redevelopment plan from the perspective of the pedestrian plaza, the architecture, the stories, the setbacks from the street. And I think there are a few more slides of that. So if we pause here for a second, this is an image, sort of a zoomed-in image of residential and mixed-use building examples. And in the center of the screen, what you see is that pedestrian plaza that I had cited as one of the permitted uses. Here we have a building as you're driving, you're driving north on Union Avenue. This might be the first building. You see, this is an example of a residential building. And in that, in that image where you see the car going down the driveway, that is the driveway that you saw depicted on the concept plan that led towards the rear of the property serving the industrial building. Here we've got another few examples of the mixed-use in the residential building. You can see the mix of commercial as well as residential spaces. Another view of the building with, again, those mix of uses. And then for this section, the last couple topics I wanted to talk about, in addition to certainly what's contained in the redevelopment plan, is what recommendations we heard from the planning board. As folks may know, as part of any land use ordinance, it's required pursuant to state law to be introduced by the governing body, and then it goes to planning board for the planning board to review it and make findings as to whether or not it is consistent with the master plan. And it also gives the planning board an opportunity to make any other comments or suggestions they might like. Your planning board did that over the last two months or so, and they had several recommendations. So right here, this is just simply an overview. So I think the bottom line is that, one, they found that the redevelopment plan was consistent, substantially consistent with the master plan. But they also had 29 recommended changes. Now, a lot of these, 12 of them were for grammatical, spelling, formatting changes. I honestly, I had a handful, several items that were just not numbered properly, you know, double-numbered threes, things like that. And so there are 12 of those changes. We also had nine recommendations to enhance the clarity of the plan, some language amendments just to have that sentence have more clarity, better meaning for them and for the developer in the future. And then there were also about eight recommended changes to the actual regulations. So on those grammar and formatting items, all of those have been taken care of in the redevelopment plan. They are, as I said before, pretty minor items. I think I forgot a P in redevelopment here and there. There were some items that were misnumbered. All of those have been addressed in the amended version. In terms of enhanced clarity, the variety, or the majority of these, rather, were accepted. There were, for example, there was a recommendation to add clarity that this is an overlay to the existing zoning, that one of the first items I talked about. The planning board felt there could be stronger language to make it absolutely clear. And so we made that change as an example. There was one declined recommendation. They had asked that the rooftop accessory uses state, or the redevelopment plan state that those uses be subject to site plan approval by the planning board. That clarity recommendation was not incorporated into the plan. However, it was not, it was declined not because it's not subject to site plan approval or because I or the governing body doesn't think it should be subject to site plan approval, but just simply that by virtue of how zoning works in New Jersey, it is subject to site plan approval. There was concern that if we stated one item was subject to site plan approval, that it might lead to an interpretation that the others are not. And so that item was not incorporated. In terms of the regulation changes, there were a few items that were declined. So for example, one of the aspects of the plan is an exemption from chapter 92, which regulates a variety of miscellaneous uses. The planning board had recommended to delete the exemption. That change, that recommendation has not been accepted. However, we did, however, amended to state that the majority is applicable, but we carved out smaller portions of that section as an exemption instead. Additionally, the planning board had recommended that the plan prohibit outdoor storage. That change was not accepted. However, in lieu of that, additional and stronger standards were put in the redevelopment plan to address some of the concerns that led to that recommendation. In addition, there was a recommendation to prohibit home occupations in the building, in the residential or the mixed-use building. That recommendation was also not accepted. However, similar to outdoor storage, instead, while it's permitted, we now have additional regulations in the redevelopment plan that are intended to address the concerns about home occupations within the apartment, within the multifamily building. Additionally, the board had recommended additional design requirements for the mixed-use building. That recommendation had not, has not been accepted. And it also recommended to delete an exemption from chapter 32, soiled soil removal. That's a body of law that the borough has that regulates soil removal. Now, that item, that exemption remains. However, it's been amended to ensure that the developer pays the fees associated with any soil removal from the property. And then in addition, the, there was, I think, a pretty significant change that was accepted, and that is in regard to the helipad or the helostop. Planning board had made a variety of changes. Those have been incorporated into the plan. And those of you that might be wondering, what exactly did we do? I'm going to show you in just another slide or so, beginning right now. So what we have is a, honestly, a page-by-page listing of the changes that we made. I do want to highlight the fact that I'm not going through the grammatical, the formatting changes. Those are just simply incorporated into the plan. But language changes are all addressed here, as long as it's not simply a typo. So beginning on page four, under the section titled applicability and relationship to the land use ordinance, this item, this addition is the clarity that the planning board had recommended. So there's been a sentence added in there that states, "The redevelopment plan shall be an overlay zone and does not repeal the underlying existing zones." Simply additional clarity, but does not change the meaning or the intent of the plan. Also in that section on the same page and carrying over to the following page, we have that item regarding chapter 32, soil and soil removal. As I said, the exemption remains. However, fees will be required. So the requirement for fees set forth in that chapter is new. We also, as I said, have retained the exemptions from those miscellaneous uses, but with three So we are not applying the home occupation, the outdoor storage, and the temporary tract office, which is essentially a sales office requirements. I will say, as a reminder, we have home occupation standards set forth later in the redevelopment plan, which you'll see. And we also had and continue to have and have strengthened sales office requirements set forth in there. In terms of deviation requests, essentially identifying the items of relief, the variances that the developer is allowed to ask for, there's one additional item that's been added to a part of that section that addresses sometimes what's referred to as field changes, changes or adjustments that are made after site plan approval. It's pretty typical in municipalities. After a developer gets site plan approval, they might have to move a tree to account for a utility line that was not, that was not known about or not properly planned, perhaps adjust building color or material to account for what's actually available at the time of construction. And so what we've done here is just provide a little bit of clarity as the plan gives the borough professionals the ability to work with the developer after a fact, but it provides a bit more guidance and states that changes that are considered after site plan approval really should be non-material, just to provide a little bit of guidance to the extent that there might be questions asked of borough professionals that are perhaps questionable, the addition of non-material provides a bit more guidance. In addition, we are striking the reference to including outdoor storage in the industrial building in that, in that section on page nine of permitted uses. I do want to be very clear, it's not that we are prohibiting outdoor storage, it's just simply being regulated in a little bit different of a manner. So while that item is struck, I would say that is not a substantive change, that is not a change to the permitted uses, it's just an adjustment to how it's regulated in the plan. Moving on to pages 10 and 11, there is some, I would say, minor language changes associated with the accessory uses. For example, rooftop recreation uses are permitted, but now it is clear that they must be accessory to a residential use. So that means that you might have an outdoor, perhaps an outdoor seating area for the residents of the apartment, but it cannot be a rooftop bar associated with one of the commercial uses. Additionally, for home occupations and outdoor storage, we've added language as, excuse me, as regulated herein, because now we have sections later in the redevelopment plan that provide additional detail. The next item on page 12, I think, is just a clarification. We referenced that an industrial building is permitted if it does not have a footprint that exceeds 320,000 square feet, and now simply states that it shall not exceed that footprint. Similarly, on page 14, I think this, maybe not similar, but this is really a correction. The plan stated that loading docks are permitted on at least two sides of the building. The intent, the clear intent, and in part, as shown in the concept plan, is that it be not more than two sides of the building. And so that correction has been made. Page 14, there are, there is a change regarding the 10,000 square feet of commercial space. As I had said at the outset, that minimum 10,000 square feet is intended for commercial space, so, excuse me, retail, restaurants, office space, things like that. We've added this additional language to ensure that the developer does not use that space for perhaps their leasing office, their maintenance space, anything associated with the operation of the building. That 10,000 square feet is intended to be retail and active uses, not the developer's back office space. And so we've added that clarification. Additionally, this is just a case of a couple missing words on page 14, where we're addressing the building height. As I said, it's, excuse me, 60, 60 feet to the roof line or 72 feet, including architectural features, but not including the parking garage. And so we've added including the parking garage rather than simply not parking garage, just a clarification. Page 15, you'll see on the screen that there's a deletion of maximum building height of 60 feet, but that is actually a duplication in the plan. It was simply a leftover line item that should have been deleted. Thank you. On page 15, still working with site design standards, this is the series of changes regarding the helipad or the helostop that had been recommended by the planning board and have been accepted. So as you can see in the first paragraph, the, I think the most important language is towards the bottom where it states that it expands what is not permitted for the helipad. And it states that commercial delivery services or any other unauthorized purpose is not permitted, but that also, but that also is clarified to ensure that products delivered to the site, you know, directly in service with one of the businesses on the property is indeed permitted. Additionally, we've shrunk the hours of operation for the helipad. Rather than just simply 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week, it's now limited to Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., but on Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And so less hours on the weekends. But of course, as I said at the outset, it is permitted for emergency use by, well, for emergency use, it's certainly not going to be limited to the hours for that. Page 16, we have, in addition, and I think a clarification regarding parking and loading areas, just simply stating that they are subject to the requirements of the residential site improvement standards. And this is really a body of law that governs residential development and the state sets forth parking space size, road widths, et cetera. And then on page 22, we have a change to sustainability requirements. Rather than stating that, referring to rooftop amenities, which are exempt from some of the green roof requirements set forth in the plan, the word amenities is instead changed to facilities to make clear that, for example, not only amenities space, but perhaps mechanical spaces, mechanical units are not subject to those requirements. On pages 25 to 26 for miscellaneous standards, these are our home occupation standards that have been incorporated into the redevelopment plan and apply to the units on the site. And so yes, home occupations are permitted. It states that there's a limitation for sales, limiting it to Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And it also limits the number of non-resident employees or visitors to the property, it limits it to three people at a time. But then it also permits, for example, in-home daycare and tutoring. Those also have limitations of not more than four children or students at a time. And in terms of tutoring, it also ensures that it's not intended for dancing, music, similar potential nuisance activity. And lastly, that there's no sign permitted for, for home occupations. Some additional miscellaneous items. As I said before, there are a variety of standards in the plan addressing temporary sales trailers. As these units are going to be rental, we added and/or rental to make clear that the trailer, the office space associated with leasing the units can be used regardless of whether the residential units are for sale or for rent. That change actually takes place a variety of times on page 27. And we also added some clarity to ensure that the developer could create a model unit within their, their sales office, and that would not count against the 500 housing units, as nobody would be living permanently within that, within that space. We also added some clarification to the affordable housing, excuse me, essentially requiring that the affordable housing be integrated throughout all of the buildings. Now excluding the age-restricted housing, because of course our affordable units are required to be family units rather than senior units. And so this language change really just does a better job of making that clear to the developer, to the public, and to the planning board. And then the last item on this page is, and I think actually the last correction, yes, is simply a correction to the plan, which is towards the end in the relationship to planning and objectives. The redevelopment plan inadvertently refers to the study area, which is a term used for the area prior to redevelopment designation, simply updates it to refer to the redevelopment area, which reflects the fact that the area has indeed gone through the designation process. And so that goes through all of the changes, the language changes that are set forth in the redevelopment plan, of course excluding those minor items like formatting that I had stated earlier. And Mr. Mayor, that is, there's an overview of the plan as well as the changes that I'm recommending to be incorporated into it prior to adoption.
Okay. Thank you. Fred, any more comments? Okay. Okay, so the next thing is we're going to go into the public hearing, and we're going to follow the process. So, yes. We have a public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Do you have a motion to read by title?
Some.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you have a motion to open a public hearing?
Some.
Second. Oh, go ahead, read it by title first. I'm just up in the head.
I'm just reading by title. An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale County, Fosa State of New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan for block 5105, lots 14.01, 53, 55, 58, 59, and 61.
Okay. Now I need a motion to open a public hearing.
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I'm sure we're going to have a lot of questions. So opening up, one person at a time, state your name and your address for the record, and then you can ask your questions directly. and then you can ask your questions directly to myself, or to our attorney, or to our planner, and we'll go from there. So, you're up.
Hi, Jim Schalago, Nine Andros Court in Bloomingdale. I served on the Board of Education for about nine years, most of you know that. During that time, there was a cap on the budget, 2%, you're probably familiar with. And it was very difficult to stay under a 2% cap, just with salaries and, you know, normal cost increases. We'd end up with like, an initial budget of like 6%, and we have to get that under 2%. Some healthcare waivers that we could apply for, but, you know, we really didn't want to do that to the taxpayers. So, at that time, I had gotten on the board after Avalon Bay was kind of approved and everything. And there was a verbal agreement that, you know, the only time that the Board of Ed would incur additional expenses from Avalon Bay would be if an out-of-district special ed placement moved in. And, you know, it didn't sound right to me at the time, but I wasn't on the board yet. And, you know, there was a lot of comments back then that that would be the only time that the Board of Ed would incur additional expenses. And, you know, from my time on the board, I could tell you that's just not true. I think we all know that's not true, right? There's certain fixed expenses that the board has, but there's lots of variable expenses that, when there's additional students, those costs go up. And if another teacher needs to be hired, that's additional salaries, additional healthcare, you know, additional technology needed. The Board of Ed, just like us, you know, we save sometimes for years to put a new roof on our house, or, you know, replace the deck, or, you know, any of those major purchases like furnace and AC and stuff. So, schools are no different, they need to have, you know, a facilities plan. And from my time on the board, there was many times when we couldn't even get to any of that maintenance, or, you know, remodeling, or anything that needed to be done. And it was really rough. And, you know, ultimately, we saw additional expenses from Avalon Bay, and unfortunately, when we had to raise taxes, the school taxes, which are over 50% of the taxes, as you know, that gets passed to the existing taxpayers. It didn't get passed to the developer, per se, it didn't get passed to the tenants who are renting in Avalon Bay, because that's all fixed. Some of it might have been increased pilot payments that went to the town, but nothing came back to the Board of Ed, except we got a parking lot paved at SRD, and the lower parking lot at Walter T. Bergen. But everything else came back to the existing taxpayers. So, you know, my question, and it's maybe too early in your process, and I've seen a lot of great work here tonight, and, you know, I thank everyone for that, but I saw the 1.9 million of pilot payments that are expected. And I understand that this is mixed use, so a lot of that might be non-residential, you know, associated with. But is there any talks going on between, you know, the town council and the Board of Ed, that the town council is going to share some of those pilot payments with the Board of Education to offset those additional costs, so that us taxpayers aren't surprised later on that there's a 4%, you know, increase in our taxes and stuff like that? So, if there have been those discussions, I thank you very much. If there haven't been those discussions, is there any attention of the council having those discussions with the Board of Ed, and, you know, to try to plan for some of those increases now that we know we're going to see?
I can tell you for a fact that we have been communicating with the Board of Ed for the past year and a half, two years, knowing this project is coming, and knowing there was going to be increase in children in the school system. We are currently working with the Board of Ed to come up with plans. I know that we've spoke many a times between then and now. As we've always said in the past, the schools are important. And at the end of the day, it comes from each and every one of us, whether you have it or we pay for it, it's coming from the same pockets.
Right.
So, and just in my opinion, and then the council will make the decision, once we get to that point where we start taking money in, is that how we will subsidize the school or help the school. I can tell you right now, we are doing several shared service programs with the school to offset some of their costs. We do all their plowing now. Obviously, we take care of the school fields, we do some of their mechanic work, we're doing anything we can to work as a partner with our Board of Ed. We have a good relationship with our Board of Ed currently. Going back to the pavement, I think that was a $300,000 bill to pave all those parking lots that the borough, our side, took care of to help out the Board of Ed. But it's not about him and me, it's about us, we're one. So when we get to that point, we're going to have to make a decision, and like I said, we're currently sitting with the Board of Ed members, to sit there and come up with a plan that we can help out with the additional kids, and how we're going to come up with a plan to take care of that. All right? So that's, it's not, we're just going to take it all ourselves, it's just that when the developer comes in, they expect a pilot. If you go to general taxes, they're going to the next town, because they're going to get a pilot. So we don't want to lose that. But we have to take care of everybody individually, schools and us, because we got fire protection, we got police protection, and all that stuff that we have to deal with. And our budget constraints are the same as the Board of Ed, we have a 2% cap like everybody else, and we stay within that 2% cap. It's very difficult to do, I agree, 100%, but we've done, we've done. But the answer is yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to say that, you know, last time, there was no agreement between the council and the Board of Ed in writing, it was just verbal. And after that one, you know, time that the parking lots were paved, the Board of Ed still had to pay for kids to go to Butler High School that moved into Avalon Bay and out-of-district special ed placements. So, you know, I don't recall during my time on the board, any other payments.
I just don't recall any time the Board of Ed came and told us they needed the money.
Yeah.
All right? So that's the communication line that we have now between the Board of Ed. I know our BA and the superintendent talk on a regular basis of needs. You met them up there the other day regarding some issues, and we're going to help any way we can with that. But we need to get to that point. Right now, tonight, is the redevelopment plan, to get past this part, and then we talk about the contract, the pilot, and all that down the road, because that's all negotiating, all right? We do have a contract for the 426, and the pilot kind of agreed upon there, but we're working on the rest of it. All right? So it's going to be in stages. But in my opinion, we're all one. It all comes out of the same pocket when we write that check. So either we pay it, you pay it, but we have to work together. And I know the Board of Ed will agree with me that we have a good relationship now, we're talking all the time.
And will that be like memorialized in an actual agreement between the council and the Board of Ed?
That will be a discussion between us and the Board of Ed, how we do that and make sure it happens. But like, we're too early in the stages to do that right now, because we need to get past this. It's very difficult, we've been working on this project for eight years.
Yep.
Okay? It's coming to where it's going to happen. All right? So, but when we get to that point, we will have that conversation, if it has to be a written agreement, our attorney, the Board of Ed attorney, will kind of work it out. And then I think we're all in agreement that we are all taxpayers, we want to do the right thing for everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Phil?
Hi, my name's Phil Tintle, I live at Seven Struble Place in Wantage, New Jersey. And the reason why Sussex County guys down here is I grew up in Bloomingdale. My family lived in, on Van Dam after, we owned the house for 60 years, sold it seven years ago. And last summer, my son and his wife bought the family house, so the Tinnels are back in Bloomingdale.
Tinnels are back in Bloomingdale, welcome.
I went through all, excuse me, I went through all the three Bloomingdale schools, went to Butler High School, played Little League in Anderson Field with our mayor, played basketball with your former police chief, two great guys. So I have a, sorry with my voice, strong loyalty to Bloomingdale. I had a lot of questions and a lot of comments, but after the two very good presentations, most of it was answered. So, just a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Growing up on Van Dam, we called it Federal Hill, which behind us. Growing up on Van Dam, with Federal Hill right there, it's sad to see it getting chopped up. We ice skated up there, we hunted up there, we hiked up there, we slayed right down the hill, we took hikes up there. There's certain peaks that you could go up, but you could see for miles. So it is kind of disappointing to see it kind of get chopped up. But my biggest concern, honestly, is the traffic. Growing up on Van Dam, which was right around the corner from Union Ave, there was traffic. But the traffic that's there on those two streets right now is incredible. The fact that you can grab 287 in Riverdale and 287 in Haskell, in between that is Federal Hill, and in between that is Union Ave and Van Dam, and it's a raceway. I'm so happy to see now that there's a speed limit sign about two doors down from this house, telling people where they should go and thanking them when they actually do it. But the traffic is bad. I had a doctor's appointment coming down 23 about a month ago, and when I hit, when I cut through Butler, instead of grabbing 287 north in Riverdale, we decided, let's cut the go, and go see the old house. So, from Excelsior Lumber to the Burger King, took me 20 minutes. I mean, think about that, it's, what's it, a mile, two miles? It took us 20 minutes to get there. And I just see these units making that end of Union Ave, wow. I just, that's honestly my biggest concern, what that's going to mean for the people. We always, growing up, we called that area down there, Van Dam and Union Ave, the flats. That area, I think, with Union Ave and Van Dam is just going to get clobbered, I really do. My second concern is obviously taxes, schools, police, is a full-time fire department given they needed instead of volunteers. As a retired history teacher at Vernon High School for 26 years, and a supervisor for six years, we had our growth spurt. Our class sizes went from, you know, 20 students per teacher to 30, 32 students per teacher. And I understand the ratio here is pretty good, I mean, it's like, under 20 in a class per teacher. I would hate to see that change, because I've been there, it's a difficult time for the school systems. I worry about class size, I worry about busing, I worry about needing more teachers, not enough money for teachers, well, increase class sizes, which is not good. Two more, sorry. Is there any way that that map could be put back up there, showing where the lots are? Is that difficult? Oh, perfect.
You just passed it.
Oh, that, that map.
Right there, right there.
Okay.
The largest, the largest track is the 1401.
1401.
Now, right now Bloomingdale owns that?
Correct.
Now, when this, if this all gets passed, it's all, does Bloomingdale still own that?
No.
Okay, who would own that?
The developer.
The developer. See, my concern is if he sells it to like, the quarry, which is right around the corner, that's going to clobber people living on Van Dam, the quarry's going to be right in their backyard. Has to expand.
Once we, once we put the redevelopment plan into place, he cannot do that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that cannot be done, because then, any developer that goes in there, doesn't make a difference, because the redevelopment plan is what it is. So if he sells it, it has to be to another developer, has to follow the plan. Am I saying that correctly?
Because my son's house is kind of like, right in the middle of where Van Dam is from start to finish, but the end of Van Dam, where Main Street is, the quarry, they got a hold of that back there, that would be tough. Anyway, that's good to hear. And the last thing, quickly, whose final decision is for this to happen, the state or the town? I mean, who says?
Well, at the end of the day, the 426 with the 72 affordable is court ordered. That's what we have to supply.
Okay.
All right? So, the 426, that's a done deal, we have to build it. If we don't, if we don't have a developer build it, as our attorney said, the 72 affordables, we have to pay for, okay? Obviously don't want to do that.
Right, right, right.
So it goes to a developer, he meets our obligation of the 72, the developer comes and builds his property.
Okay.
All right? So, the part, we're kind of, I'll say, in between. The state says you have to do this, we have this piece of property, kind of form a partnership, and we get our obligation done, and then the town benefits from the pilot, from the revenue coming in that keeps growing at 2%, 3%, whatever we finish negotiating at. All right? One of the biggest problems Bloomingdale's always had before we were sitting here is, our expenses go up, our revenues stay here. So eventually, your expenses outweigh your revenue. This is going to help. Avalon Bay helped, despite what some people might think, really offset a lot of our taxes. I can go back and do the history of how much our taxes went up, it's not really the place to discuss it. But we're being forced, and like every other town around, I don't know if you've been through Pompton Lakes, there's a huge building on Main Street, that's 210 apartments, right on the Main Street, right on the sidewalk. We don't want that. Our plan, going back when Mayor Dunleavy was here, and we were first on the council, is the Union Ave was going to be our new corridor. And I don't know if you know, the state raised the flood plain. So Main Street, from the IGA, or you can, the new food store, to the Riverdale border, is now in the flood plain, I would say probably into Hamburg Turnpike.
Growing up on Van Dam.
You remember right at two down there in the water?
Yes.
Yeah. Or we don't get any more flooding on Main Street, because we did the park, the park plan. But by them doing that, they did it for the state, it wasn't just like, hey Bloomingdale, we're raising it, they did it for the whole state, instead of taking the individuals and see, you know, they kind of hurt us. Because you really, you want your downtown to be developed, so you can go down and walk, go to the coffee shops and do that stuff, and sit outside and have a cup of coffee or a drink or whatever, kind of like the River Beer really built themselves up today. All right? But it's very difficult now, because state made it difficult for Bloomingdale. Half our Main Street is gone to develop.
Yes.
And we do have somebody that purchased property down there, now is struggling to do what they want to do.
Bloomingdale's, you know, big apartment buildings, go right on, right by Ryerson Ave, too, that was that kind of, anyway, I do want to thank everybody, and again, I've lived in Sussex County for 39 years, Bloomingdale for 26, but Bloomingdale, it's just, it's my town, and my parents had two businesses here, went to church here, Little League, I mean, Bloomingdale, you know, so, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your presentation.
Appreciate your comments, Phil, thank you.
Teresa.
Hi.
How are you?
Teresa Moreno, 41 Sunset Road, Morse Lakes. Thank you for the presentation, it was great, really, everything, so much information. Only the fact that the trucks are going to come towards Morse Lakes, only, I don't see anywhere where there's a traffic study being part of the site plan. Is it going to be part of the site?
I can answer that.
Okay.
As you know, Union Ave is owned by the county.
Yes.
So this developer has to go before the county with a traffic study.
Okay.
And then the county comes in, weighs in on what they want them to do.
Okay.
Whether it be, I'm just throwing things out there, install a traffic light.
Right.
Right? Wind the road in front of their building, so when people go on and off, it doesn't interfere with the normal flow of traffic. But I can't tell you what that's going to be, because the county makes that decision, because it's their road.
Now, when will that happen in the process? Will we know about it?
Yes, I would think you would. That has to be advertised, just like this is advertised.
Okay.
All right? I'm not sure if they come.
With our planning board.
With our planning board, they have to bring their traffic study, then they go to the county, so simultaneously between our planning board and the planning board of the county. But the county has the overall say on what they're going to make the developer do, we don't weigh in on that.
Okay.
Okay? And the reason, you know, what we did is, in our plan, is definitely, if there is trailers coming out of there, we're hoping for a data center, that's why it's in there, then there's no traffic, then everything stays kind of status quo, other than more cars coming out. But if there is, they make it right, because the quickest way to get out of town is to go to Wantage without coming through Main Street.
Sure. So, and we wait for the site plan, we follow the planning board agendas and see when that's going to happen, and then we can come and speak our minds.
Speak your mind, yeah.
Okay.
Because when they go to the county, they go to the county planning board, which is not here, that's obviously down in Patterson. So you're also entitled to go there and listen to it.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, just to piggyback on what Mr. Schalado was saying about the vehicle being put in place to pay for the additional students, I understand it's not at the time yet, but a tuition contract does make the best sense. There are going to be over 60 kids at least in that development, and we have to make sure that our schools are taken care of.
I agree.
Okay.
And under the study, we've seen two different studies, one says 65, the other one said 70.
Okay.
So we're all on the same playing field, we know that's going to happen, we've known it for a couple of years, the Board of Ed has known it for a couple of years, that's why we're building this relationship. Like I said in the beginning, we're all paying for it.
Yeah.
So it's got to be done right.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Linda Shorten, how are you?
Linda Shorten, to Westwood Road. The first thing I have to say is, Councilwoman Hudson offended me with her comments. I thought this is inappropriate venue to say those things. I think that the path should have been either to address the administrators of the pages where it appeared, I never saw anything like she alluded to, to either address them or the people making the comments that way. We all know, many of you, including me, have lived here for a long time. There's not one reporter in this room, there's no Debbie Walsh, where people There's not one reporter in this room, there's no Debbie Walsh, where people can pick up the paper on Sunday and just sit there and know what's going on here. Yes, we can email you one-on-one, I can call Mike, but that doesn't include what the community hears and therefore, a lot of things need to be vented on Facebook. I've often thought, why doesn't the town have some point, I know you have meetings, but have some point where we could have some input as a group, not calling each one of you? I have questions to Councilman Graziano, I don't even know, I mean, I could call him and ask him, but then how do we share this information? I don't know, but I, I really didn't like that.
Okay.
Mr. Semerow told us that the pilot program was not required. It was not required. My question is, what is the benefit to the taxpayer for this pilot program with this development?
The benefit to the pilot is we get more revenue coming in, as I stated before, that any big developer, anywhere, will not come into your town without a pilot. They all look, look forward to it. I know Pompton Lakes, I know our new building has a pilot, Wannakee has a pilot, we have one. So if you want to entice people to come in and develop your town and build your town and make your town grow, you have to work with a developer and build a relationship with them on what their needs are to come in and invest in your town. This project for, to me, with developer is a $100 million project he's investing in Bloomingdale. Okay? So we're going to get the benefit of the 1.2 million dollars in a pilot coming in, which is new tax money, new revenue coming into our town.
But why not share that without a pilot? Why not share?
Because they will not do it without a pilot, they will not do regular taxes because they would go from 1.2 to probably $3 million. Fred, you can probably answer better than I can.
What happens too is, they'll want additional units to make it work. That's what their pledge will be before court. And one part, I know there's discussions that have to be had, say with Board of Education, but the county doesn't receive anything except 5% under a pilot. And nobody's going to feel that bad about the county not getting their share. So it stays local and you have that specific revenue you can count on, it's like we have with Avalon Bay, there's never been a tax, they can't appeal their taxes, we know what their revenue's going to be and it's been very stable. But as the mayor said too, earlier, the tax rate within the borough is one that is higher than a lot of towns. So if we don't compete out there and try to work a pilot, they will go somewhere else or they'll want more units for development. So that's what you're up against.
What if you say no?
Then we still have that $30 million obligation in the portable housing and we don't get the renewables, you know, as part of this, we don't get to sale of the land, that's, that's.
Okay, so back up to the days I remember that it was a done deal at 360. Why is it now 500?
Because at 360, the developer walked away and said, I'm not doing this, and pretty much sold it to Tulkon for water. And so nobody wanted to develop it this way and this was the best proposal that came to the borough. There were other developers who said, you're going to have to help us or we're not going to pay for this thing. So you need all of these components, you need the commercial, you need the pilot, you need to temper the development, they will come hand in hand. Otherwise, it really won't happen because it's been over 20 years and there's been no more, that's why.
But you do know, the reason this is happening is, this property does not lend itself to this development. It is environmentally a nightmare, it's environmentally sensitive, it's everything that should not be developed. And I don't know, have you been on the COA website? I know in October they'll come out with a new round. What were your findings?
Yeah, they will come out with a new round and if they come out, when they come out with a new round, this was last round and the prior rounds obligation, our obligation will likely be higher and this property is probably going to still, now the standard that you're saying, it's true, it's got its strengths, it'll be more of a target for higher density development where we're going to have to find it. So it can only get harder, the governing body is, this is an opportune time and it's taken a lot of years to get to this point, to try to make this work with now more development.
But it's my understanding from what's out there from the COA, at this point, they are not going to keep increasing this. I think they found out that they're going to back off because of development and I know what you're saying is, we're still back there doing this.
Linda.
What is the worst scenario?
Can I just interrupt you for just one second? And then going back to what you just said, the governor, right, when he, they're revamping fair share. In his comments, and it's online, you can go look, and it says, we are 230,000 homes with fair share, short in state New Jersey because people are moving in from New York and whatever, so we're, we have a shortage of homes.
Yes.
And in those comments, it says, build, build, build. So the numbers aren't going down, they want to keep building for fair share. We have to get ahead of it, not behind it. And right now, we are behind it.
Makes sense.
It just, it just is the way it is.
Yeah, build, build, build.
I didn't say it makes sense.
Making us build when we can.
I'm, I'm not saying it makes sense, I'm just telling you what they're going to require.
Was he, was he alluding to COA?
Yes, he's reading the fair share housing, it's the fair share housing program that he's putting together.
I think you're going to find a big, a big change in that.
I hope it goes down, I hope it's less.
Franklin Lake's under this constraint.
Everybody's under this constraint, what did Franklin Lake just go?
Where are they building?
After you conclude, Linda, I'll comment up there.
Franklin Lake.
Oh, okay, thanks. Anyway, you hear my ire on all of this because I've been living here for 60 years and.
I'm with you.
We know what the town would be what we want. But, okay, now we're stuck with this pilot. What I'd like to know is, what are your plans for this extra $2 million a year? Let me finish with a question.
Sure.
Are you considering paying down that $600,000 a year interest on your debt, which has grown incredibly over this decade? Or perhaps you will give some of it to the schools because the schools are in one of the worst positions since my children were here, when they were on split session and they had to buy portables. I think that's the, that's where we're at right now with what's happening in this town. That's what it's going to, that's what it's going to amount to. And certainly, even if you don't have children in the schools, you still want your property values to remain high. I think the Board of Ed needs their fair share of this, but I understand what you're saying about that too. My other problem, having been here a long time, is we all know and highly respect our police department. Even when I was there years ago, it's totally an inadequate facility. It is a total complete joke. You add another six officers from this building, can't we have them build a police, we need a new police facility?
All right, so where's that money come from?
1.2.
I'm not saying that, I understand that, all right? So we need to bring in new money. We can't do it currently where we have, all right?
So that's my question.
And you're not going to, we're not going, what we do at police office, when we hire a police officer, every year we sit there and meet with our chief, whether it's pastor or current chief. They come into our, and they meet with us and sit down, the needs of the police department, we do it for the fire department, we do it for every department in the town. If the chief comes to us and says, I need two officers, all right, then we have to make a decision here, whether you're going to hire two, hire one, find somebody from somebody else to fit the needs of our, our police department. That also goes with the fire department. The fire department, we brought two brand-new trucks, okay, because NFPA says they were out wearing their welcome to, to be used, all right? But we have to pay for those trucks, but that's, that's the standard that you have to follow. Now, if I understand it right, fire-wise, is when they're trying to change that from a 25-year maximum or 20-year maximum to 10. So that means every 10 years, you've got to replace the truck. So either we start planning now and bringing new revenue in to take care of the needs of our public safety area, I do not believe we're going to need six police officers, but I need the chief to make that decision of what his needs are. As it goes for a police station, I'm on board, we've all said that, that we need a new police station.
It's, it's.
Okay, it's been like that, I've said that from the day one I've been on the council, but that's going to be, you know, if we have to take care of the school, take care of the police, we have to do that, but we need new monies coming in. This is a way to create that.
All that new money, like taking over the garbage in Butler, yeah, I heard about all the, the revenue, what I've never heard is what it costs to supply that. So there is a balance.
Well, yeah, I don't want to go into the shared service, because that's nothing but a win-win for me.
That is, that is, you know, that's, that's an issue.
Right.
I think our police deserve a brand-new wonderful building and I'd be, I'd vote for that. We, I thought we all learned something.
Remember you said.
I would, we all learned something, I hope, from Avalon Bay. There are now four times the students that were predicted.
How many is there?
There are seven predicted, there are today 28.
Okay.
So whatever they're telling you this development is going to have, you can multiply it by four. I don't even care about a traffic study. I've seen traffic studies, you can forget it, it'll be huge. I've seen enough development in this town to know that, that pretty picture of what they're going to build says right on it from the planner, it, it won't look like this. So maybe that's just my prejudice against, you know, presentations. I do think our attorney and the planner were at least preparing to educate us here. But one of the hardest things to face is the loss of Trends Newspaper. So that's, that's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, thanks for listening.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I could, just a few things, Ms. Moreno asked about the traffic study and the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
There will be a 200-foot notice before the site plan hearing, anyone within 200 feet of the, and there'll be a public hearing and the public will have an opportunity to be heard.
And how will we hear about that?
Well, that would be, they have to personally serve everyone within 200.
Well, I don't live within 200.
No, that'll still be a public hearing, it'll be advertised.
We still advertise in the newspaper.
In the newspaper.
We still advertise in the newspaper you can read.
State environment.
Thank you. And Mayor, I could just add.
Sure.
With respect to the numbers, I think, you know, it's been some discussion about the schools, remember, we had an obligation of 72 affordable units, they're all multi-family units, that's already, that predates the governing body and that goes back to the court order of 2007 and '08. But the rest of the market units to get to 426 are going to be one- and two-bedroom units, which generally are people starting out or people maybe later on downsizing.
That's the old study.
But still, they're, they're not three-bedroom units, the other market. And then the delta or the new proposed agreement, again, doesn't have any additional family units because they're all single, so.
Okay, I have to disagree with you. You remind me of this study they did in Marwood years ago, that was not going to happen, that was true. Young couples moved in, they saved their money, they bought a house and had a family. Now, go down to Wayne on Valley Road, there's small apartments, there are single parents with a couple of kids. It isn't the same dynamics as it was back then. We will have many, many children there and it's very, it's a very scary, I'm not in favor of this, did you get that?
I got that, thank you. I didn't expect your rigidity.
Hi, I'm Richard Rooster, I'm at 235 Union Avenue and we know, I'm right in the center of the near track, so I'm, I'm thinking that if this project gets built as it is, I don't know if I'll be able to get out of my driveway between, you know, 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon. I have, I'm a chiropractor, my, I had a chiropractor come down Hamburg Turnpike and on, in Riverdale and he said that you could not get in or out of his office between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock and the truck traffic and everything else, I think is going to be a nightmare. You were talking about that 3,200 square foot building and you had mentioned data center. My son lives in Virginia, they had data centers, they have data centers going up all over the place. He said, it sounded great until they started going online. He says, those things draw a tremendous amount of electricity, it's a continuous hum, the people have apps, are really trapped, it's really decreased their quality of life, it affects the internet and everything else. So all the different things that you're looking at, data center should put a big X through that, okay? We really have to talk to communities that have the data centers up and running and find out if that's been a plus or a minus. Once they get online, you know, I think the, it was just all belonging to the electric company, I don't know if you'd have the capacity.
Well, I can just, before you go further, I know that the developer has contacted Butler Electric to make sure they can handle something like that and they said absolutely. So I know that side of it, they've, they're looking into and this is just coming from them to us that they, they can.
Yeah, and like the sewer capacity, I know that you're going to have a lot more, a lot of units there and I know that for a number of years, there was a moratorium on the, being able to hook into sewer units because of the, all of the increased regulations and making sure that the water quality coming out of the sewer units were potable water and stuff of that nature. So I mean, you know, I remember.
The sewer capacity, we have more than enough because the history of Bloomingdale, we went out, bought millions and millions of gallons of sewer to develop and we never developed. And actually, we sold some of our capacity several years back to Riverdale because we had too much. And one of our biggest problem with our water and sewer bill is, we only have this amount of people paying for it, but we're sharing that cost that should have been shared by a lot more people. So this is going to absolutely help our, at least stabilize our cost of the sewer. Your water bill is here, but your sewer bill is there, if you look at your sewer, that's the one that's to kill it. All right? So we can handle the capacity, we definitely have that. This is all stuff that we looked into before we really got to where we are today to make sure, because if that wasn't possible, we wouldn't be able to do any of this.
I've served on the Board of Education with Linda for a few years and, you know, and I have many friends who have been councilmen. And I understand when we look at our tax bill, that 50% of the tax bill is about for the Board of Ed, the other portion goes between county and running the town. And when you have pilot program, it seems that like you sort of cut off the Board of Ed, but you direct the majority of that money to the town. And, you know, when I was on the Board of Ed, I think that they were saying that the average kid that's in high school is about 18,000 to 20,000 for tuition, for the elementary school, it's about 12,000 to 15,000 for tuition. So if you have three children in the school, the average residence school bill is maybe about $50,000. While our children are in school, we're being subsidized by everybody else. Once our children are out of school, mine are 40 and my youngest is 36, we've been paying back for the, for all of the subsidy. When you have places like Avalon Bay or this new project coming in and they're, and you're not having them pay a school bill, I mean, if you really want to be fair, you could say, okay, for every student you put in, if it's an average cost of 20,000 or 15,000, give them a surcharge for those children while they're in there, of that amount. Or, you know, I was talking to somebody who lives in Riverdale in the apartment complex or condo units and they said that they pay about $5,000 to $6,000 a year for their property tax. So if you have all of the, the units that are not low-income, if they were assessed about $5,000 or $6,000 a year, that would be where the rentals.
The ones in Riverdale, which is in the Grand, a lot of them are personally owned through, and they have a homeowners association and that's how they pay their taxes because they're sold, not rented, but there is some rentals. That's the 2,500 we were talking about earlier.
Yeah, but you could assess each, each unit about $5,000 to $6,000 and, and use that to figure out what would be an appropriate tax for, for those units. Because when you take a look at Avalon Bay, Avalon Bay, it's a one-bed, one-bedroom unit, Avalon Bay is $2,700. A two-bedroom unit is 3,000. There's three-bedroom units go between 3,700 and 4,800 a month. That's what their, their rent is. They have several units that are available on their website. So, you know, when you see that somebody at Avalon Bay can be paying $40,000 a year So, you know, when you see that somebody at Avalon Bay can be paying forty thousand dollars a year for rental income, if you ask that developer for five thousand dollars a year for taxes, that would probably bring your one point two up to about two to two-point-five. And then if you said, okay, if you have a dozen kids in the school, and you multiplied fifteen thousand times that twelve, then that money would be going to the school, because you can't run a school under the two percent cap worth. You know, I mean, when you have the teacher's contract going up at three percent minimum, you have the health, um, all of the health, uh, costs for insurance. I mean, we saw those numbers skyrocket.
Believe me, we know, we have the same problem inside.
So, so the thing is, is that you have to be realistic. We, as taxpayers, shouldn't be subsidizing this project if they're only paying one point two million. You know, I think when, uh, they built Staples and Home Depot, they were paying, I think that's paying a couple of million dollars a year in property taxes up there, because you're gonna have police and stuff like that that are needed up there. Now, one of the things that I was wondering is if you take a new look at Federal Hill, it starts to rise pretty steeply about a hundred feet in, you're gonna have an amazing amount of blasting. And I was wondering if, when they start doing that blasting, um, if they take and, uh, you know, that, they should have engineering studies of all of the houses and buildings and DPW and the fire department prior to the beginning of construction, so that that way, if our houses are damaged by the construction, the vibration, that, you know, we should be able to document it, we should be able to be able to get that, the damage repaired.
Let me see if I can get your question, Tom. Can you talk about that at all?
Uh, hi, doing Tom Marotti, Marotti here. Uh, they can do a pre-blast survey, that's not under the, do a pre-blast survey.
Can we make that part of the contract, that it must be done?
Yeah.
All right, 'cause, yeah. So just another thing that's happening with some people, I know that that property, when they do excavate and blast, it's, all right, all the rock material is going out through the back. Nothing is coming out on Union Avenue.
Uh, I know that when you buy a quarry, you can always have fly rock, there's gonna be a lot of dust.
Well, I, I understand that, and they'll be responsible. It's no different than when they built Avalon, there was blasting that went on there. But I believe the blasting, you could probably confirm, is on this type of project, it's not like what Tilcon does. It's a low, all right, but there will be dust, there will be that. But any rock material will not be coming out, no trucks will be coming out on Union Ave to remove rock. It has to go through the back, because there's already a haul road built to Tilcon to bring all that stone back into there. And the, part of that deal is we're getting that stone back, um, from Tilcon to use, that's gonna be donated to Bloomingdale, which is like seventy-seven thousand, five hundred tons of stone that when they take out is coming back to us. And then we're gonna use that from the property too. But yes, that, that can be, that can be done.
Because I don't, I don't.
Do you guys want to acknowledge that, Mike, can you just, so we'll be, you got that, okay.
It's not with the redevelopment.
No, it's not with, it's just this future what we have to do, it's a good suggestion, but it's not part of the plan.
But the engineering, I think that that, the, the pre-engineering, structural engineering surveys should be done for, you know, the homes along Union Avenue, the firehouse, the DPW, you know, and as well as you have the nursing home, the Bloomingdale Healthcare Center and Avalon Bay. And I was thinking, I said, when you have those vibrations, if something happens and they rupture the high-pressure sewer line that goes, I mean, that's gonna be a major catastrophe. I don't know if they have a, a reserve account or some way to remedy the situations. I don't know if the blasting can maybe impact my well, you know, because we have a well on our property, and it's worked well for years, but if it suddenly stops in the middle of the blasting, I think that would be, uh, would create a hardship.
Okay.
Um, you know, and, and also, you know, like when I was talking about the tax rate, that was actually just on the residential, where the, with this large commercial building, you know, I think that, um, you should take and look at what, if it's a fulfillment center, warehouse, whatever, see what the normal going rate is, because, I mean, if you're bringing all of this in, uh, you know, I mean, we should be able to get the, the going rate, you know, not at, you know, even if it's, but it, we, it should be a positive for the town, because you're gonna lock into this ring for a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, you're next, after I did. Hi, Lisa.
Hello, Lisa Ben Dell, thirty-nine Elizabeth Street. Um, I'm, my son was at the planning board, you heard him there, um, he can't be here tonight, he's at Fire Academy, gonna be volunteer fireman, so I hope you don't mind, he wrote some things down for me to read. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, because, uh, the presentation was wonderful, by the way, cleared up, it did clear up some things that I'm gonna have to relay to him that we weren't understanding. Um, so I'm just gonna read his letter and just have two comments. Um, I apologize for not being present, I'm at Fire Academy. Um, I was brought up in this community, still being sold the notion that the American dream was that anyone could own a home. I was under the impression that this could still be reality for my generation until I was presented with the modern real estate market. He's in his twenties, by the way. Uh, the family home I grew up in has appreciated well past menial salaries with one-quarter of the buying power my parents enjoyed. Rents make up forty percent of my pre-tax income, I make the state average salary with bonuses, I make the median salary. For all intents and purposes, should be considered the average Joe. Being right at the median, I do not qualify for any government assistance. I, along with many others in my generation, are given little consideration on how I can advance myself in this modern economy. Equal opportunity housing that is being offered as apartment rentals is an oxymoron. Subsidizing over-inflated rents will not bring people out of poverty, it keeps most perpetually locked in poverty. Low-income housing can be offered for rent or sale. If these units were offered for sale instead of rent, it would actually provide families and young individuals like myself the opportunity to advance in this economy. We would actually contribute our fair share of taxes to our community. We would feel invested in our community and be more likely to participate in extracurricular groups and organizations that would support and help our community flourish. I, we were looking, um, I've, I've been home a lot watching TV lately, and, which I don't normally do, and there's a lot of, um, things on TV about this exact problem. I know you, you spoke about, you know, we have the same age child, and they're kind of locked out. You have really high real estate prices, or you have rent that is crazy. Like somebody else mentioned, I went today with my older sister, who is gonna rent for a while at an Avalon. Two-bedroom is thirty-two hundred dollars a month, okay? There's an article, uh, that was posted, uh, this was in New Jersey Future. New Jersey's Housing Landscape, The Mount Laurel Doctrine and The Search For The Missing Middle. And this is what everybody's talking about. My fear is, and I, I get the development, and I get the need, and that really helped explain why we have to do it, but the state is really out of touch with what they're doing. They're, they're gonna pay over-inflated rents for seventy-something families that are never gonna climb any higher than that. If they, if we could, just like, um, was brought up about Avalon, uh, the Grants, it's condos. Those people are paying taxes, low taxes because it's Riverdale, but still, it's less taxes than I'm gonna pay for my home, and it's a way in for these, this generation and other people that can't afford.
Still their condo. I mean, I looked online at them, I was actually on to today looking at it, they're four-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars for a condo.
Yes.
Plus your age-raise fees, plus your taxes, so they're all really paying the same amount in the long run. I mean, it's, it's, at least, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
It is cheaper than a house these days, because, you know, you see the little capes in our town are going for like five-something.
I'll tell you a quick story about somebody, a friend of mine, went to look at a house on Rafkin Road. They went there, whatever the person was asking them the number, they overbid by twenty thousand dollars, they got outbid by a hundred. It's happening all over the place, it's, but then, you know, it's.
I know on page twenty-four, it does mention that it could be, oh, no, not twenty-four, I'm sorry, it starts on twenty-four, but on twenty-five, that it could be offered for sale, it was a possibility in there, that it could be. I, I guess my, my thought was, could, could we, and if we can't, we can't, but ask them to make, you're making a fifty-five and up, which a lot of those people would, could possibly, um, be, uh, get low income, you know what I mean? So they could also be able to get low-income apartments instead of being in the fifty-five, you know, taking a whole building and doing that.
We just gotta be careful, because if we start asking for more apartments, you know where that's going, I mean.
No, no, I don't mean that, I mean, I mean, instead of the developer making rent on five hundred units, could, just a thought, that could some of them, of one of the buildings or a portion of it, be condos.
We'd have to ask.
So, again.
Yeah, we'd have to.
I'm sure he's gonna say no, but I just wish that, I fear that in a year or two, all this is catching up, that this isn't working, giving low income to all these people that don't help them, it's just building it higher, the need higher, and then you have real estate prices that are crazy, and you're gonna have a big gap of people that can't stay in town or can't buy a house and net them one, and can't afford the rent, because then they're not saving anything. So, anyway, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, appreciate it. Man?
I'll be there in about five minutes. Daniel Hawkins, Sixth Pearl Street. First, I want to thank the presenters for the information they provided tonight, it's very, uh, very educational. And then I want to start off with the, with an anecdote, and I know you just want to hear that. Years ago, I used to work for Hercules Incorporated, they, uh, sold explosives at the time that I was there. We had three divisions, we had R and D, we had sales, and we had manufacturing, I worked in R and D. And I got to know a fellow who worked in sales very well, his name was Spence. And so Spence was always coming back with these sales orders, he was a great salesman, until they, they, the, the manufacturing facility would look, would look at the order and say, Spence, we're losing, we're losing five dollars a hundred weight on all this dynamite you're selling. He said, ah, don't worry about it, we'll make it up in volume. Well, you know how that works. So let's do a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation, because there's not much of a commitment that I heard here with regard to how much money is gonna go to education. So latest figures for Bloomingdale, operating expenses per pupil are about fifteen thousand dollars a year. And let's accept that, you know, let's not go to, then there's, you know, four X multiplier, let's just go with what we have, seventy new students, all right? Fifteen times seventy, all right? All about your calculators, I did it in my head, and I think I got it right, that's one point oh-five million dollars. Operating expenses, that doesn't include, uh, new facilities, uh, new buildings, anything associated with the buildings, doesn't include any of that. So are you committing to pay Board of Education one point oh-five million dollars out of that one point nine million for education?
I cannot commit anything here tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Just one.
One point two million, that one point nine was the higher one, the other thing.
Oh, is it one point two million a year?
One point two was the real one.
Well, there you go, so now you've got, you know, ninety-five, ninety-five, uh, nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars left over to, to play with, or, no, less than that. But everybody should understand, and I know at least one member of the council is familiar with the concept, and that's cost commitment. Everything you get carries a cost commitment. Very simple example, you buy a car, what are your cost commitments? Your cost commitment is the loan that you bought the car with. Your cost commitment is the oil, the gasoline, the insurance. Everything associated with owning that car is a cost commitment. You put in a new ball field, you put in lights, you put in a restroom, you put in bleachers. All of those things are cost commitments along with their maintenance. So we have to understand that there are a lot of cost commitments that are coming up with this. There's police, there's infrastructure, too many for me to go into right now. But I want to know that there's gonna be a very detailed analysis of all the cost commitments. What are the assumptions, because if you can't measure it, you can't control it, going into any sort of calculation as to, what is this gonna cost us in terms of infrastructure and commitment cost for that one point two million dollars a year that we're gonna be getting? Because if we don't do that, well, that's just gonna be fiscally irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, this is Patrick, uh, one-twenty-five Reeve. Thanks, Ray, but, uh, I'm also gonna go back just a little bit, but, but, you're in my goodness. Okay, so I sat up there in the mid-nineties.
I, you went to high school with my son.
I did.
It's like those forward.
I did.
Okay, this is all the.
A lot of that here tonight. I saw the near track, I'm in the nineties, it was the lawsuit. The three-hundred-and-sixty, I was on the council that one, the three-hundred-and-sixty units you're talking about were single-family homes, up to five bedrooms. So when that open was undeveloped, it was because market share had dropped, three-hundred-and-sixty units could have, like, a hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred kids in the system very easily, and that's why it didn't go. Just, just, that's why the whole veneers fell apart, I would know because I was building veneers. That's why they died out. The development of, uh, I'm a, I'm a site development contractor, that's what I do. Just to let you guys know, this is what I do for a living, the development of these, of sites like this, okay? And the only projects that I work on are pilots, because developers just won't do it anymore. I get you're right, you do math, and, and I get it's right, but they're not coming. You're not gonna buy gas for a dollar fifty anymore, because the market isn't allowed it. It's the same thing here. The development of properties like this, expensive as they are, and it's just not gonna be, we haven't any good properties left in the state of Jersey to develop, what you can do on economic basis, units equate to return. These guys are all in the business of return. They're gonna put a project together, your job is to get the best possible project you can get for the money. That's what this is. You're not going anywhere with developers and say, listen, I want tax bases, I want this, I want that. You don't, you don't tell them what they're doing, they have the opportunity to buy something that you had, and they'll come and develop the best possible product if you control it, I think, but trying. I'm, I'm not, when you sit here saying we should and we shouldn't, because of town, I'm just telling you that, that in this case, that property, I, I lived here, I'm, I'm a wife farm, Butler, Bloomingdale guy, and I've watched every town around us take advantage of this. We have not. There's been councils, there's been, me included, we just, you know, we tried to push things a little bit, and it didn't up. I'm just telling you that you don't have very many opportunities like this, and it won't, and it won't be another one. One thing nobody has even asked is, what happens if you don't, if you don't do this? No, what happens? I wanna know financially, what happens if we don't do this?
If we don't do this, then we're responsible for all of the affordable housing, which in Fred's, um, presentation, Fred, how much was that?
Thirty million dollars.
Thirty million dollars, that the taxpayers of Bloomingdale would have to, um, we would have to take on that, that expense, and.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
I'm sorry?
Since you, I know, obviously, I know what you do for a living, that thirty million is being conservative.
It's not your cost. Okay, that's, I mean, you guys will be, I, I'm just telling you, it's, it's not your cost. Very difficult property to be, although I agree, but it can be something, it is something all the time, I do. For, from the, from the last consulting combination discussion, right? You're, being contracted, whatever that's gonna be, you're responsible, not the town, okay? He's gonna do it, I do it all the time, we're gonna do it. Matter of fact, I did it for you, because I built that one, so I did it for you. You have still there? So, I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna tell you, is, the town is not responsible for that, that will be a contract.
No, I, I was, I was wanting, knowing, I wanted to make sure that the contractor had a, had a plan for what happens if something.
He absolutely does, he absolutely does, it is not on the town. It is the town's responsibility to make sure that inspections are correct, that things occur correctly. That's through the building department and the state, as far as blasting goes, it's up to the state. And so the areas of those concerns, honestly, don't, don't fall here. They fall when, if it gets approved and they go to fill, that falls within the confines of, of that contract, they're not gonna do it. Sewer line, I put it in, okay? The chip, don't get me wrong, anything can happen, I have done it, very, very, very minimal chance of anything going wrong here. Head next to us, okay? Uh, water line, you've got water, sort of, the last year, that we, I was a part of that, we bought it, but they unloaded because then, back then, we thought many of this stuff was going to happen. We lost our recruiting in this town. The Highlands Act came in and took the horse pony, okay? We, we are bound by law, and I don't remember who it is, we are bound by law to take care of each responsibility that has been around since I was there, thirty years ago. We do a good job. We also didn't get pushed, we're playing that. The state, eh, we don't want to go out, they're done, they, this, this body has no choice. I do a lot of this type of work, I hear developers all the time, running these meetings, they're crying, they gotta give another fifty units, they're not just thirty units. Developers going out, property's getting smaller, developers are going out, you don't get something like this, that you have control of it and then, you're gonna get something new. You may not like it, don't you know, the W adds, that's what you get, maybe worse than what you think is coming. So I don't wanna scare, I don't wanna pose, I don't want to pre-proton it out, I'm just telling you that in forty years, or fifty in my career, that I've watched, every town around us took advantage. We did not, we just lost Main Street, because the state side didn't want to do that. We don't do something along the lines here, I have another question.
We're done.
Does it, if it doesn't go, and you are responsible, you can, you can condense the seventy units into a smaller piece. You can sell it back to Tilcon.
And we don't want that.
If you, I mean, we, I could, that's. If you, I mean, we, I could tell them want it, because they did that. I can tell you that, okay? You don't, you don't, again, we're, we're looking. You don't want that. Legally, they'll be able to come much farther than you think. Do you think you're worried about dust and everything else now? Let some guy come in, I, I mean, I, I do know this developer, I have not worked for him, I do know him. The, the, they built a project. They're going to have control between the end of the day, we're going to have control over what we're allowed to. I just want you to look at it with a different side of eyes. You're, you're, I understand, I believe in what it's like, I'm the first guy in, and every town has apprehension. It's like a people, oh, everybody wants to say, "What are you doing on it?" Every time they figure things, they all have some... Nobody wants your taxes to go up, nobody wants your cheese to come down, but everybody wants things better. It's got to work. That is done, it doesn't work that way, and they're stuck with financial responsibility. They're doing very, in my opinion, we don't, in my opinion, very good financially responsible here. In a project they have control over, that many towns don't take the same control. Property's already developed, or they're doing demolition of something to put something back up, and it's an old statue or an old zoning that falls in place, and they get something that they, they don't want. They have an opportunity to do the right thing here. I don't want to take anybody's more time, I appreciate, I wish you the best of luck, good luck.
Thanks. Ken?
General Field, 17 Cedar Street. Thank you, everybody, thank you for your presentation. And Fred, been there, done that. 2007, '08, '09, I sat up there, as did several of the other members of the audience. They know that this is a court-ordered situation. We don't have a choice, we can't turn it away, we don't want to. Otherwise, it gives us bigger problems. More lawsuits from the next builder and the next builder. We had two additional lawsuits, which we never should have had, which delayed D.R. Horton or whoever came in after him. We don't need that. We need to get this done, get it approved. Am I happy about it? No. Did I move up here 22 years ago because it was quiet, it's country, Yogi goes through the yard? Yeah, I love it. Am I happy about Union Avenue? No. There's going to have to be a light. Good luck with the traffic study, because I asked for a traffic study on Main Street and Elizabeth. And we were told no by the county. Good luck. There's been more accidents over there, you know. A lot of the people know here, that are up there, know the number of accidents. So, all I can say is, we have to do what we have to do. And I know there's another round of numbers that are going to be coming out. And we really don't want to get hammered by the state any more than we already are. Thank you.
Thank you. You're next. It's okay.
Melissa Perez at 134 Red twig Trail. I get you're stuck between a rock and a hard place, I'm not here to discuss that. And I really appreciate everyone coming up and making sure that the schools and the students are taken care of. I'm, uh, the treasurer of the PTA, so we work really closely with Superintendent Dr. Nikasia. And I think the problem that stresses me out is, it's not more money for services for the kids that are coming, it's that we're at max capacity already. There are no more closets in the school that can be turned into offices. So my fear is when more, and, and that's just from kids coming and moving into homes that are existing, right? Like, I see the people that have lived in this community for, you know, 50 years, and when they sell their house, it's a new family that comes in with two or three kids, because it is a great place to live. So I've seen class sizes go from 17, 18 in a class to now we're at 23. And I know because I have the class counts for every grade from the PTA. So I know the class sizes are up to 23 students already before this. So my fear is, we, the school is going to need to come and ask the taxpayers for more money, and it's not going to get approved, because nobody wants their taxes to go up because we're already, we're battling against them not being happy about this. So I would like to see something more, I don't know, I know you said you can't commit to it, but somehow to even sell this and the fact that, or they need to add on to one of the schools. I mean, the fact that we have three schools isn't, you know, cost-effective to begin with, and we just keep slapping Band-Aids on our schools, especially SRG, and it just can't continue. But, but we can't add 70 more kids into the three existing buildings.
Like I said earlier, this is just the plan.
I know.
Okay. We'll get to that point. This building is not going, minimum five years. So between now and then, and working very close with the school board. And you can talk to Dr. Nikasia, because, you know, we, we, we hear you.
How many more can move into the town on their own in those five years?
Well, actually, actually, it's funny you say that, there's a, a study, I went and looked at today, that our total people living in town, coming to town, were about 150 people less than we were last year. Overall study of total number of residents. Okay, residents. So I, when I looked at it, I said, it didn't make sense because there's no housing and people are coming, I got new people on my street, um, with one child. But we hear you everything about the school, alright? But we need to get to the phases where we can make commitment. I can't commit any dollars, or we can't commit any dollars, until we have them. So that's under the negotiation side of it, right? Which was there.
I need to do anything to doing it, right? Without a number, but it's, it's going to, like, pilot or no pilot, you guys have, the town's got to help the school.
We got to help the school, you know, we, we will work together. We, like I said, we've had so many conversations with them, and we hear everything about that. But, you know, whether we lower your taxes on this side and the school, it's, it's a balance.
I need people that don't have kids in the school to realize what we're already at now. Like, if this wasn't even happening, the school should be coming to the town saying, "We need to add on," right? Without this. We should have asked for it a couple of years ago, because I'm not getting closets, every closet is like a government office. There's no more states.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I'm very supportive of the schools. I think that we have to do everything that we possibly can here, and it's going to have to be a strong consideration. I went to those schools, I was right next to Mrs. Shortman's first grade class, I had Mrs. King there. And my kids are in those schools right now. So I absolutely agree with every single one of you in what you're saying. Alright, we have to get through the process first, we're a long way out. But that's an incredibly important factor here, no doubt.
Okay.
My name is Terry Brash, I live at 207 Union Ave, across from this great, I think that's going to happen.
I know your house.
Not really. Um, so my thing is, I'm kind of a unicorn here, I did not grow up in Bloomingdale. Um, I grew up in Wayne, but I liked Bloomingdale, I bought my house almost nine years ago. I'm single, I have no kids, so I own the house by myself. Um, my thing is, is what's going to happen to my property value when this is built? Like, I own the house by myself, I pay my mortgage, I do everything, but like, is my house value going to go down when this is built? Because of the way it is, you know what I mean? Like, I kind of just need to know, like, what does something like this do to, like, the town? Or, because I'm directly across from it, I know I bought a house on the Main Street, but in my backyard, I don't even hear the traffic. You know what I mean? This is going to be a whole nother level of craziness.
I, I can't answer that from the back.
Trying to sell my house, is somebody going to buy it now? Probably not.
Well, I'll take a little history back, Avalon Bay, we've heard the same issues. Alright, traffic, the whole caboodle, alright? And then it was a lot of noise when it was being built.
Yeah, but there's no commercial in Avalon.
No, I, I understand that, alright? But commercial is open from what time to what time? I, I don't know how it's going to run. We don't know what's going to be in that building. We're just, we always show you what's going to be permitted. Okay?
But if you had kids, would you buy a house across from this? Would you want them running, playing in your front yard across from this?
I have apartments all around my house, and my kids play there.
But that's apartments.
This is apartments.
Yeah, but it's not commercial. You know, do you understand what I'm saying? There is a difference. I own a business in town too, it's, there's a difference. There is a difference.
I can't tell you what you're...
I'm just saying it makes me nervous.
Okay.
So you know that. Because in, in this, the way it is now, for me to sell my house, even though it's gone up in value, to sell it, I can't buy something else, I would have to downsize. So it's, it's kind of frustrating for me. In a couple of weeks, I'll own my house nine years, on a 30-year mortgage, so what am I doing? You know what I mean?
Just going to ask.
Yeah.
You know, nobody can make sure what's going to happen.
Right.
I have it right based on the way the plan is. You're on Union Ave.
I live across from where the DBW used to go in and out.
So that, you, you, you know, with that layout, the industrial, is that the part that, that's 430 feet?
450.
450 back, but the retail, the coffee shops and things like that would be in walking distance of where you are, based on generally the plan. So you're getting, you know, so I'm saying that's not a negative, if you're asking what it may look like, the commercial or industrial's going to be the furthest back from you, 480 feet.
I understand, but I'm getting like a thousand new neighbors that I didn't expect. When there was, when there was a ha, a single house on a double lot across from me, when I bought my house. Now I'm getting a thousand new neighbors that I didn't want.
But, but I'm just trying to say to you, the, the, that retail portion that'll be there should be something to...
I think, before you feel that, I think it, personally, I think it's, it could be a hot...
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, see you. Sure, come on up.
Two seconds. How you doing? I'm Jeremy Marout from Warren Capdeline. First, I'll acknowledge I know nothing about anything. I don't know any of you either, some of you I've seen online. I don't know what difference this makes of us speaking even, other than that, you know, you got to hear us. So I just find it kind of odd. I don't know the history, so I commend you guys for listening to a lot of complaints with no solutions. But that makes me think, like, who has been on our side? There's no dissenting opinion at all that I've heard from anybody. Maybe there's been over the years, and then I hear 20, 30 years, zero accountability, and now we're in a corner. We got no choice. Nobody brought alternative solutions for us to hear out, nobody argued it. We've got this gentleman here, great lawyer. Have we appealed everything to the highest courts? You know, it's just weird and odd to not have that other side of the story or any other kind of options. And here we are. So we got to take it or leave it. No, there is no leaving it, we're taking it, so, I, I mean, it's a done deal, as far as I understand. That 72-unit affordable, that's going to grow?
No.
Never?
On that piece of property?
No, no, our requirement for this, for the town.
The next round is coming out, I think, in October.
Later in the year.
But we don't know what that number's going to be, and I think the way the law reads is that once it comes out in October 16th or somewhere in the middle of October, I believe by January, we have to have a plan, how we're going to deal with it. And I think we have to submit that plan by June, if I read it correctly.
How long 72 been the number?
It's actually, it's actually more...
And is that the total number? Like, are we good after 72?
No.
Well, okay, like, we don't know none of this. Shame on us, we haven't been to these things. Maybe I need to get involved a little bit or something.
I would, I would welcome it. I would welcome it, we, we would appreciate it.
What's the number? What's the real number?
Right, right.
And we're still screwed if it's 30 million for 72.
Still just... The way, the way it works to get to the 72, alright? Our number was much higher than that through one, round one, two, and three. Fred, jump in here if, if I'm wrong. Okay? So we, we basically negotiated with Fair Share, because we've been in negotiations for over a year with Fair Share to get where we are today, because they pushed back pretty hard at you. Alright? We're very shocked that they're going to give us room to put this industrial building up, because that could be another 500 apartments on that piece of property. We don't want that.
John, can you explain to, to them who Fair Share is? Some people may not understand that.
It's, it's affordable housing. It's the, the division, um, it's COA, basically, it's COA.
They're, they're a party of interest in every case on behalf of affordable housing. And they, they speak on every case, and in this particular matter, we went to that as, as a borough, and they supported, uh, this project without additional affordable units. Without additional, uh, to the 72 that was obligated back in 2007. They did that in 2015, they did it again in 2020, and I've never seen this, but this year, they came back again and said, "If you're going to build out this property," and this was through the, the borough not coming forward saying, "We're going to present another 1,000 units." Fair Share said, "Okay." Because we see how difficult this is, we agree we'd be right at 72, and we're not going to push the issue. So, you know, like you're saying, you're new to it, I really understand what you're... It's a hard concept to understand how someone else can compel your town to do things.
Well, it's government, I get that. What is the number? We're at 72 here, what are we required as a town that, what does this 72 get us? What's left?
Well, it gives you immunity, it gives you protection to zone. It's 72, but as the mayor's saying, for the next round, when we get our numbers, like all towns, it very well could be more. And that obligation will go up. And one of the things the borough does here, this is really one of the most desirable tracks, right? Because it's vacant, it's not subject to the Highlands, and it's not subject to green acres restrictions. It takes this property out of play for more units. As the mayor said, there won't be more affordable units on this site, because we had 72, the borough stayed with 72, we locked into 72, and the remaining part of the parcel, that's six acres, is going to be restricted for development, so that they can't come back and build more.
So, so does the 72 satisfy what we need to achieve? Or are there more affordable housing units we are still responsible for?
It satisfies our plan for the third round? Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because what I'm getting at, you're saying it's $30 million the town will have to spend to build 72 units. What more money are we on the hook for if the 72 doesn't cover it all? Or you're saying 72, we're good to go?
For the third round.
For the third round.
So we don't know the numbers are going to be in the fourth round because they're going to come out.
But the, how many years is 72 been the number?
We've been at 72 since 2007, correct? So it doesn't mean that the number hadn't gone up, but you said our really good attorney did a good job going to Fair Share and sharing that 72 is still good enough in their eyes when it comes to what our number is.
You'll be, you'll be a new to town, okay? If you look at...
John, I'm new to town, I'm new to this whole thing.
Okay.
I, I, I keep private, that's why I don't know you guys.
All right. Well, it's nice to meet you.
We'll see.
Two shots. We need to shake it up. Alright, but I know where you're living.
Yes. Do you know when I vote?
If you look at the Bloomingdale on a map, alright? Northern Green State Park is Bloomingdale, alright? We're, I'll say we're about 70% green.
Yeah, I got to vote for that.
Alright, and all that stuff. So we're limited on what we can do. This is the only piece of property that we own that they can build, we can do this project. Okay? That's why we're heavily involved in it, because it's our piece of land, and we're trying to take care of our affordable side of it. The third round, once this is done, we are done. That's why we need to get it done, so the fourth round, we don't, they don't go back and hit us again heavily with another 72 to include them together, alright? So we want to make sure we, we are taken care of. Once this project on that piece of property is solidified, they can't come back and say, "Put another 200 there," because you have the property, because they agreed to that, alright? That was really important, that's why I kind of went to the industrial, alright? Which is a great rateable, once we figured that all out, but it can never be turned into apartments through the, the plan that we put together. Now, what's going to come down in October? We can't determine that because they haven't said that. And then that gets all negotiable, when it comes down of what you can and cannot do. Because I can tell you, a town like, I'll use Ringwood for example, they're all in the Highlands. So that stops them from doing this, because they're in the Highlands. Our horse farm at the end of town, going back history of that, was going to be 455 or older apartments. The Highlands wasn't there. Mysteriously, they changed the line to the Highlands to go right to the horse farm, that project went away. Couldn't do it anymore, alright? Which would have helped us, would, probably wouldn't be where we are today, because we would have that built, but it is what it is. We're stuck, we're stuck with what we need where we are today. None of us were part of that.
That 30 million that you've mentioned a couple times, that's only if we don't build up on the hill. Then that 30 million, we would be responsible for the 72.
What I'm saying is if you all of a sudden aren't telling us that there's another 70 we gotta take care of, and we still got on the hook for 30 million, like, I wanna make sure everybody knows what the real number is. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Jeremy, did you explain one other thing? The third round was from 2020 to 2025. We were obligated as a borough to build 72 units on this site, because there was a site, there was a project that should've been built, you heard tonight, going back many years. So if this gets committed and built, the 72, we meet our third round obligation. Fourth round starts 2025, right? And we're getting new numbers, but like the mayor said, maybe they got Wannecote. If our new numbers, somebody comes forward and says, well, there's still this near track you could build on. The answer's gonna be, you go in this direction, no, because this project builds out the near track. So even if you give us an obligation, you can't match it up to a property that the borough has or a development that was turned down. Then there's no place to put it. So what the borough's trying to do is not only meet the 72, but stay ahead of the next round. Because what's happening in a lot of towns, when the projects aren't built or committed, the developers come in and the regulations say, if you couldn't build it last round, and there's a new obligation, then you should get more density to get it done. And we're saying, no, we're gonna lock them in now, and the developers cannot build more units or more affordable units. So even if, and when we get a new obligation, it won't be here. And there's very few, if any, opportunities to put it out there else. And if there's no other properties, then that number will sit out there. But this one, we as a borough were really kind of married to, because we turned it down 20 years ago. And a court said, you should've approved this, and you're going to, and you're gonna make this obligation. And now the borough's turned that into getting the land for free, selling the land to this developer, right? And getting, what was it, $6.7 million?
Overall.
Overall, for the land. And then getting the units and getting what is now going to be, if it goes forward, senior units and the commercial property with the, with the provision that there's no more. They can't come back and say, you can add more units here. That's the other part of this that's very different. The borough sells the property. The developer will not be able, like a lot of developers are doing, to say, to your point, now we're gonna get more? No, that's part of the whole strategy to stay ahead of it.
Well, I can't remember saying this, and don't kill me, then aren't we handcuffing ourselves? If you're saying that these requirements can go up, we got nowhere else to build, but now we just put in this restriction that
No, no.
We got, this is different, those ones.
This is different, because years ago, a court ordered it to be built. If nobody else can find the place, the units, then what the borough can do is say, that's our obligation, like the mayor said about Wannecote or West Milford. If there's no ability to build or find a location, it's not an obligation for the borough to spend the money to do it.
All right. And again, I, I, I acknowledge that I'm way late to this, and just to not hear debate and other options, I mean, it's kinda like a trust me, borough scenario, which is really, really odd in these day, this day and time. Now, this pilot thing, right? That also accounts for the commercial side as well? Like, they're capped, whatever they put in that big freaking unit, we're capped at what money we can take from these people?
No, because that money grows every year.
By 2%?
2%, 2% of
That's 20 grand.
But that's, we're still negotiating that, so that, that, we're still there. We're not, we're not there yet. That's why we're giving you an approximate of where we, where we're starting at. That could, that's gonna
That size of commercial, I mean, that's crazy.
And it all depends
Especially with 30 of these pilots, that's a minimum that they're gonna pay. And then depending upon how the contract and negotiations are put together, we as a council are aiming to negotiate a rate that we increase. So if all of a sudden, everybody can hand over a foot, we're getting a bigger piece. We just wanna make sure that
We get a piece.
We get a piece at a minimum dollar figure, right? And then if they make no money, we make more.
We just say, Kevin said profits, you know, we must hide the profits.
Well, you're saying the funny thing, like, we're trusting them to get the surveys done. We're trusting them to tell us this is the right thing. We're trusting them to tell us
No, that's not, no, because there's checks and balances with the surveys and everything that's going
Yeah, but the county who did all these weird things already, like, you know, they cook stuff, they change stuff. I mean, it almost doesn't matter. And the last thing I gotta say, because you said you hope it's a data center, and I agree with this gentleman, God forbid, in five years, you're saying they don't even start in five years? With AI, the power consumption increases 17% minimum a year. You're gonna need a nuclear power facility to, to be able to run that thing. So please, get some like people that know some of these things.
Well, we'll look at
It was a pleasure to meet you. You know, now you do know me. I still sit far away at the football games.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Gotta come up. Gotta come up. Thank God, take your hat off.
Jill Batista, 123 Hillside Drive. Do you have a choice or like a voice in what goes in that warehouse? What you sell to them that day?
No, if you, in the plan, there's what's permitted uses, and we listed what's permitted to go in there.
So like, Amazon could go in there or?
It, it all, that side of it, I can't guarantee that, but like, one of the permitted uses is a warehouse. Amazon runs a warehouse. Okay? So that's a permitted use. But there's a ton of them. There's, um, somebody wanted to come in, and I'll use, Jay, I'm gonna use you for example, wanted to run a lacrosse program in there, it took the whole thing. That would be a permitted, it's recreational. Okay? A bowling alley could go in there.
All right, and one other question. Will the flooding on Van Dam, I mean, I don't live on Van Dam, I'm up on the hills.
I know.
Will that worsen, the flooding for Van Dam, the construction?
Under, under the storm management plan with the developer. The developer's responsible for all runoff on this property, has to create drainage within his own property, so the water does not run out.
So it's possible that it might help
It could actually help.
With the issue on the
Yeah. Thank you.
So, Jason Reynolds, 15 Sycamore. Just 'cause you did say something, the open space, is there plans for that part of it?
No, right now, that is gonna be restricted area considered for open space. Now, whether that's gonna be a field or it stay as is, because it is, all right? It's not gonna be excavated or touched.
The reason I bring that up, as a coach and somebody who owns a lacrosse company, finding field space to rent is getting tougher and tougher. Some of these places are charging, like Moorestown, we run a field there, $375 an hour for a field. Simple math, six acres, you could fit four fields and a bathroom. You could generate another million dollars a year with limited overhead. So I was just wondering if that'd be, you know, open space and a revenue stream.
Kinda eye-opening.
So, just something I just wanna throw out there, if that was a concept, or it was just gonna be a literal open space of, you know.
Stayed away, it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I work here online.
I wanted to.
Kevin Holden.
Good, how are we doing today? Kevin Holden, 341 Andrew. Does Wannecote know that the traffic's gonna be diverted to that end?
Did they tell us when their traffic was gonna be diverted to Bloomingdale?
What traffic?
Well, they're planning to do construction over there too, so, no. But I, I can guarantee the mayor knows, because he owns buildings in Bloomingdale.
Right. Okay. The, the other thing is, how much, and this is not, this is, I think a fair question. How much input do you have in going to the counties when it comes to like a, a study on the traffic?
Honestly, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, I, I, I can't answer that. I know they have their own planning board, they have all that stuff, and then the developer would have to go before them. Can I attend that meeting? I imagine I can.
Okay.
But I can't answer yes or no, whether we have input or not.
Okay. Because is traffic just going out of this complex, going in, making, you know, going into Wannecote? But incoming? Like, all, all the trucks that would be, and all the traffic going in there?
Be coming up, you know, making a left.
That's the only way it can come in?
Trucks over 40,000 pounds.
Okay.
Okay? Because right now, if you think about it, Amazon cars and the UPS, they're all coming through town every day. Hundreds of them are coming through and going either direction. They will not be on Van Dam, because Van Dam has a weight limit now. I think we actually lowered that. All right? So if they see that, that's
Okay, and if traffic gets backed up in, you know, uh, you know, coming off of Wannecote to go in there, you don't think they're gonna come through, you know, Butler, down 23, and down through Butler, or down through Riverdale? Off, off 287?
They could travel on, they could travel on Union Ave.
So that's gonna be a traffic nightmare all throughout town?
We don't
What's that?
We don't know that.
There's a high possibility, let's be fair. You know, if you, if you have 500 units and you have, say, a car, just a minimum of one car per unit, that's 500 cars that are going in and out of there. That doesn't include the workers at the
Whatever.
At wherever up there. So you're looking at a minimum of 500 cars that are going through town again, as well as 18-wheelers. You're looking at, you know, or trucks. You know, what's a traffic nightmare? Should the traffic study be done throughout the entire town, all coming off of, you know, through Riverdale, coming through Butler? Because it's all gonna be affected.
We have to just say, and then the traffic study needs to be done, then we'll take that into consideration.
That's why I was just asking you how much, but as an option for you to, you know, discuss it with that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else? Okay? Do you have a motion to close public comment?
Someone?
I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
He had a story. He didn't, you didn't tell us about the
Franklin Lake story?
Well, he can tell that after we close.
Yeah, let's, let's close. Who does?
Oh, which one?
Sure, let's make the motion.
Hang on, hang on.
Can you make your point after, or? Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, we, we referenced Avalon Bay quite a lot this, this evening. You know, for those of us who remember being here for that visit.
Yep.
I mean, I, I think you, you know, it was our first pilot, our first
Go around.
Yeah, I mean, so I, I feel like, and I hope that we've learned a lot from Avalon Bay and all the things that it's encountered. Hopefully, this will be an improvement on that, and all the different ways that people are That, that's all I wanted to say, is that it's not like we do develop on a regular basis here in Bloomingdale. So, I mean, obviously, we have no improvement, hopefully, we will improve.
Okay.
So I told about this one.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your comment. Hey, motion to close?
Someone?
Second.
One favor?
I
Okay. Fred, you wanna tell your story?
Yeah. Well, actually, Beth's probably gonna tell me, because I think there was a short convention, well, this happened in Franklin Lakes. And I think Beth was involved as maybe the planner or special master of Franklin Lakes, where there was a lot of discussion about the affordable housing development. They sell it with industrial use, things like that, but it could happen anywhere. Maybe she wanted to just give you a little background of that.
Yeah, I think Franklin Lakes is, is a good example of how developers can, how developers can take advantage of municipalities, even when municipalities have, have done everything they can up to that point. That town is, their structure from an affordable housing compliance perspective, very differently than Bloomingdale in her ways, I can ask the questions, but I'm not gonna waste my time on it. But the reality is, that town was sort of forced to deal with a very, they had a significant property, they express scripts, corporate complex, for those to be definitely familiar with. It was vacated, uh, there's no office available to it. Well, who decided to pick up the property was a major home builder, and they entered into very significant negotiations with the borough. And in that instance, that site is likely going to be developed for, um, around 400, 400 to 500 housing units plus an affordable housing component that Franklin Lakes itself is responsible for. There's affordable housing that will be mixed in with residential units, and then the borough will be responsible for construction of its own park and I own the project. And I think what's, what's relevant to Bloomingdale is the fact that they had this large vacant land resource that was not tied up with development. And it became an affordable housing opportunity for the developer, because the borough was unable to plan how it might otherwise be developed. And the distinction I wanna draw here is, in this borough, we have worked very hard with this developer, yes, to create residential housing, but to also occupy and ensure that the site is developed with more than just the residential use, which was a lot of what Franklin Lakes really just didn't have the opportunity to get done because of the, the order of vacancy and, and frankly, the unwillingness of the developer to, and to do additional uses and perhaps to get the site conditions as well. But here, we've done everything that we can to really lock up that property to ensure it's gonna be developed, not only to take care of our affordable housing obligation, but also with commercial uses that provide other benefits in the form of ratables, jobs, and just not additional housing in a community that already struggles with cost.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, Kevin, a motion for adoption.
I have a question, maybe for the attorney, maybe like, I don't wanna keep you guys
Public comment is closed. So I
Can we reopen it?
We have delayed public comment after this.
I could, the way to get a subject, email him my question, because it's gonna be long.
I can afterwards speak to
We're gonna take a, a break between this, so if you wanna talk to our attorney,
Yes.
Once we're done with this, you can absolutely do that, or, or both of us, if you weren't happy to listen. Okay?
Now, Mayor, there would be, Ms. McManus went through a number of redevelopment revisions to the plan. So I would ask if the governing body would consider an amendment to incorporate all the revisions she walked through on, on her presentation as part of the final redevelopment adoption. So you'd ask for a motion to amend, as amended, with the redevelopment revisions as set forth in the presentation by Ms. McManus, line by line.
Okay, move.
So who would that be?
I'd make that, I'd make that motion
Oh.
To, to amend the plan for the, for the comments in Ms. McManus's plans. Given
And now we can adopt?
Yeah, and Rich, Rich
Rich second.
Yep, then be discussion in a row.
Okay. Any discussion on that? No, I think we've discussed it enough. For the last eight years, and, and all of your questions were fantastic. So thank you, Paul, Tommy, and paying attention.
I'll just, I mean, make one comment, which is like, I obviously had, you know, a lot of reservations as the planning board liaison, and we reviewed the initial plan as it was introduced in June 5th. And I think, given the amendments, and given the work of our borough engineer and our planner, in satisfying some of those concerns from a clarity perspective and from a regulation perspective, I am excited for what this could mean for the town. It's cooly, despite how frustrating it may be as an inact on Union Ave, as most have conveyed tonight, so.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second to adopt. Okay? Roll call.
Della Rica?
Yes.
Radiano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hubert?
No.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay. Kevin, motion to take a 10-minute break. One favor? Thank you, thank you all, I appreciate it. 14. 2024 8-14. You're not gonna pay the bills? You didn't say Just a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need a motion for resolution. Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Radiano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Adoption of resolution number 2024-8-15, 120-124, Main Street, prohibited on-street parking. Have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Do I need a roll call for this?
Yep.
Okay, any questions? Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes. Okay. Adoption of resolution 2024-8-16, acknowledged and received of the 2023 audit report. Have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes. Item D, adoption of resolution number 2024-8.17, corrective action plan 2023. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item D, adoption of resolution number 2024-8.17, corrective action plan 2023. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
She said yeah. Okay, the one non-agenda item, resolution number 2024-8.18. This is for the award of $65,560 to purchase recreational equipment from Walter T. Bergensfeld. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Any questions?
Yeah, so that's not the full grant, right?
The full grant is $65,000, the value of the place that we're buying in the gym is $32,000. And do we have money left over to do curving, mulch work like that, right?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if we had more left over?
If we have money left over that we're going to use for that part.
Yeah, great, yeah.
Okay? Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor, on that note, we did meet with the HWN, the superintendent of schools, for a location up there. So we decided on a location, bring you the parking lot, it is, we have the little kid playground as well, we figured we'd working out the dult, we have the dult fitness center, and it's also close to the school, for the school, you can get six, seven, eighth grade to get out there, use it as well, go in the gym. But they're going to, using it in front of the sport of education, you get there, cool, but not a location.
Oh, good, okay. Okay. Kevin, motion, wait, public comment.
Someone.
Second.
One favor? Anyone wishing to speak, come on up.
Don't create pressure.
Stay, stay.
I wouldn't answer.
Say five U N A. 18.15, prohibited street parking, do you know by the residents?
There's a planning board.
This is a planning board application for that. This has nothing to do with the residents. On those, there's two spots that were taken out because they're doing a project there and they reversed the building, so we're losing-
Yes, this is, this is coming from the county. The county wants to-
Oh, that's right, yes.
-to this resolution. But they're putting a crosswalk there and they're going to pump it out, the road there, they're going to lose two spots on the space there. They want a resolution to move down, saying that we're okay, losing a few spots, we're going to put that crosswalk. Where two people got hit and one person died, right by the bank, police.
It doesn't really affect the homeowners at all.
So they don't lose the parking spots?
Those, those homes are coming, that's-
120 to- Yeah, 120 to 124 at the planning board are the units between the church and-
Post office.
-the post office. A new development project has been approved on site plan, and as a recommendation to that, because of where the driveway is exiting, they actually suggested that we remove the on-street parking for visibility so that it turns out of that driveway, a better line of sight under the traffic. So that's why there's no on-street parking there as part of the county recommendation. And then they're, on top of that, they're going to put-
They're putting a crosswalk where you push the button when you want to cross and everything flashes.
In a light flash.
And they have to bump that out to put the stanchions in on that one side, the other side, I don't think they have to.
They don't have to do it over there, because we did have multiple incidents there where
people crossed and get hit by cars, so we're just trying to make it safe. But it doesn't affect the residents because you can't on-street park on Main Street, that's just for retail purposes over there, they can't. You can park there now overnight, but during the winter, you can't anyway, that's just the way-
New development is going to provide five spots for retail parking-
Yeah, whatever.
Off-street now too, so.
Specifically, this resolution, there's no need to notify residents. There's a general rule in another part of town, if you restrict parking to not-
In a residential door, like, if they were doing it on my street and they wanted to do one-side parking, we'd have to notify our residents, yes. Yeah, this is the county road, so we don't have to.
Okay, that's not what you were going to-
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else? Nope, okay. Motion to close, late public comment?
Someone.
Second.
One favor? Okay, our next meeting is September 3rd. This is a workshop meeting at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
One favor? Very good. Thank you, people. Much love, Fred.